Now, is yours on?
Yes.
So, once we turn our four on, watch, we're getting the feedback.
There it is.
I saw Nick last night. I told him I meant to do this. You're still all in different positions. Well, what's going on with that hump? Why is it doing that?
Because the equipment is older than you are.
That may be true, but they made perfectly good equipment in the 60s, so... Who's Mike's even doing it just?
So, it's these four that caused the feedback because when they had to expand, they just added another piece of equipment instead of buying the bigger piece that had the right number of channels. So, now, they're just not working together. We need a new total.
Well, is that one off because nobody can sit up there?
Well, but it doesn't matter because it's either turn all of these on or turn all of these off.
Well, we can turn it off, Kevin.
Well, but it means nothing.
That's...
Well, it's not working. You know, it's either all four of these are on or all four of these are off.
That's the problem. Oh, yeah, we're not going the whole meeting. We'll turn the microphones off for that.
Just have the existing equipment on as long as it's not the microphones.
Really?
Yeah. It's the equipment just because of the age and the condition of stuff over here.
It's just unware.
Because if we unplug that out, these four are dead, but it's not the... It's just time to actually give it a proper take it apart.
All right, you guys, I asked Council. Well, couldn't I buy a set of power?
The mixer!
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You can get them all in one thing. You can get them in the mixer all, but that can just work. You don't need eight pieces of equipment. One mixer board with one shelf. There you go. We don't need all the other stuff, I mean.
Ralph would break starter.
He's gonna show up with a bullhorn, y'all can hear it.
Oh, yeah, I saw that too.
Well, one of them is... One of them we don't need, I think. I mean, it's there, but we gotta look at it.
We're gonna roll with it.
Okay.
All right, we'll get started. All right, the time is now 7:05. I'll call the meeting of the Rocky Ford City Council to order. Rebecca Lee, do our roll call.
Barone.
Here.
Martinez.
Here.
Mosby.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Mullins.
Here.
Mayor Guruley.
Here.
If you will all rise, please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and the true republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lynette, will you read our mission statement, please?
Cheryl, we bring the quality of life in the city of Rocky Ford and make it a great place to everyone. We want to strengthen the relationships and create a private community.
All right, we'll open it up to public comment. Our first public comment here. Anyone like to address council on any items not on the agenda, please come up. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. We have several items on consent agenda. We have the approval of the council meeting minutes from May 27. We have an application for renewal of liquor license from Jody's Grill LLC. We have an application for renewal of liquor license from Fiesta Cafe. We have an application for renewal of liquor license from Rocky Ford Food Market. We have an application for renewal of liquor license from Mission Dally. We have a request to close Public Street from the Arkansas Valley Community Cancer Support Group for the Survivor Weekend on Saturday, June 28, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. We have a request to close Public Street from Rocky Ford Chamber of Commerce for Freedom Fest on Friday, July 4, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And we have the authorization for the city clerk to issue a 60-day extension of temporary liquor permit for Doghouse Bar and Grill LLC. If anyone would like to discuss those more, you know, you can move it to the tonight's agenda. It's not a good promotion to approve the consent agenda.
I'd like to discuss a couple of them.
Okay, let me know which ones.
The one for the Chamber of Commerce and the one for the cancer.
Okay, so both of the requests to close Public Street. All right, so those two, we will move down to new business. So, with those off consent agenda, click for motion.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Call the vote, Rebecca.
Barone.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Mosby.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Mullins.
Yes.
Mayor Guruley.
Yes.
All right, and tonight's agenda, we will have... So, we will move those from consent agenda down to new business. And we'll have item 13.7, which will be request to close Public Street from the Arkansas Valley Community Cancer Support Group. And we'll have item number 13.8, which will be the request to close Public Street from Rocky Ford Chamber of Commerce. With those additions, a per motion to approve agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have the motion from Robert, second from Mullins. Call the vote.
Martinez.
Yes.
Mosby.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Mullins.
Yes.
Barone.
Yes.
Mayor Guruley.
Yes.
All right, we have our presentation for this evening will be a presentation about the Hearst Trophy. And I want to pass this one over to Councilman Mullins. You want to take the lead on this?
Thank you. I'll read what we have here. The Hearst Trophy was awarded at the 18th National Irrigation Congress in 1910 for best general county display of products grown under irrigation. The conference was held in the Library of Colorado and focused on the importance of irrigation for agricultural development and the role of the government in supporting those projects. And also highlighted the dispute over whether water policy should be in the hands of the federal government or managed by state and private entities. By substantial majority, the Congress endorsed the federal control of interstate water. The trophy will be on display for this night only at City Hall and will be eventually on display at the Rocky Ford Museum. So, this trophy had previously been in a vault here at this city. The majority of people even within the city didn't really know it existed. And it's a pretty significant historical artifact. We wanted to share it with the community and also with the rest of the world. We'll have that published online whether people see it. If you're here tonight, you can see it right back there as you walk in.
What? Now, somebody bring it down front. Or everybody can see it.
Please, wear gloves when you pick it up.
I don't have gloves with me right now.
Ready? You got some, chief?
Sorry.
We need to make room on the table. Can you move it?
Well, I have set it up there had I known. I thought that was the perfect location.
Yeah, you got it.
I just want to see where it goes first.
Is it bad microphone this morning? Because now we get the harmonica from when you did that because he got closer.
The tubal does.
Oh, yeah.
That's quite interesting.
It went away.
How? We still have the background.
Well, it's not that one. And it is silver.
Yes, it is a big silver trophy, like it looks like. But, yeah, we're gonna be happy to have it on display. Do you have what you need for photographs? Okay, could you move that forest, turn it to you, Paulson? Thank you.
Rebecca? Yeah, please. Thank you, chief.
I know that was your grandfather there at the center.
Yes. That's why my family and I are here tonight. That trophy, as you said, was at the Water Congress. My great-grandfather, my sister Carolyn, John W. Edgar helped put together a display that was taken up there. The display included 1,105 agricultural specimens. John Edgar was selected to help put together this, help put together a display and to take it up there. He was the largest sugar bean farmer in Otero County and was a leader. He was sent multiple times to Washington, DC by the community to lobby on the behalf of Otero County, on behalf of the sugar bean industry and that. And he was taken, was asked multiple times to go back there and do that. So, he was the one that, and I see you have the minutes from the Congress, was the one that accepted the trophy in Pueblo. So, we have a tie to it that way. I will say I have another tie to it. In 2008, the city of Rocky Ford hired me. I'm a professional appraiser of art antiques specializing in unique oddball things, including Jacques Cousteau ship, the Calypso, and the Hearst Trophy. It was one of the items they asked me to appraise, to go through the museum and appraise items that were representative of the collection, the things that the city and the museum own. And I just wanted to say that it was awarded to Otero County. It was designed by Shreben Company. It is, there's been some speculation in the newspapers over the last 115 years. It is silver plate. The interior is not sterling silver, is not solid silver. You can't do that. And solid silver is not sterling silver, which is a 925, 925% silver per thousand. It is silver plate. You can see that from some places. At some places, it was polished either overly aggressively or with the wrong products, which will take that silver plating off, and the interior is for a meal. So, I just wanted to have that information. I don't know if that report's still around, but I can provide...
I can receive.
Yeah, it was done in 2008.
We may have a copy of that along with the other appraisals.
And that gives you an idea. I'm not gonna say, it's confidential, I'm not gonna say what it was valued at 2008, but that gives you a concept. I will say from the standpoint of silver, that error and this type, it needs to be in a protected case. It needs to have humidity control. The reason I went, "Please put gloves on," is because the oil in your hands will damage the silver plate. And I know that the museum has people that never bear aware of that. But that trophy represents, and I mean, obviously to us, it represents part of our family history. It represents the history of Otero County. But that trophy and what it represents is more than just what it was, it was one of that Congress. If you look at the history of Rocky Ford and Otero County and association with agriculture, you can very closely track the growth and the decline of our economy and our communities and our agriculture, very specifically to the Sugar Factory. And so, that trophy has a much broader context and history. And I would, I think, we would love to see that that history be shared through that trophy at the museum.
Yeah, thank you. We know that you've provided some pictures and some more historical context, which we greatly appreciate. If you could give either me or Rob Marshall a call at the museum. We do, like, living history interviews, and we'd be honored and we'd be willing to...
Carolyn is the only one that remembers Grandpa John to some degree.
Fairly.
Fairly, yeah. But we do have quite a bit in history here.
Well, thank you so much for sharing, Rebecca, I appreciate it.
Yeah, but it is important and it's, yeah, when we heard this was happening, it's kind of special, so we wanted to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
All right, thank you. So, we have that presentation, just to talk a little bit more about it. And clear on the this evening's agenda, we'll have some action on getting that moved over to the museum. We'll move over to our staff report. We'll have our city manager's report from Stacy.
I don't have a whole lot of date on the Eighth Street property. That closing is set for Monday, the 16th. 50 sidewalk replacement projects. We have three property owners that have come in to pay, that are moving forward on this project. More than half backed out of the program. The street signs have been ordered. That was quite a process. I didn't realize how much was in there to do, but I've got it done. And so, those have been ordered. The water treatment plant reservoir, the damaged section of the fence on the east side and the gate have been now repaired. So, yeah, the restrooms are repaired and the electrical box at the fairground have all been repaired. I have ordered decals for the city vehicles, and they are scheduled to be applied on Friday, the 13th. Nature Everywhere, they're a funder that gave us money for Crystal Lake. They were here last week and had a workshop with a team of people from the community. So, that was insightful. And then, I have Action Academy next Thursday and Friday in Pueblo. Department updates, the only one I have is Public Works prepped last week for Cruising into Summer, replacing fire hydrants and training seasonal staff. Summer Ball has started for Parks and Rec and the Rocky Ford Public Library, the summer reading program has started. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Questions on city manager's report? Good job. All right, thank you, Stacy. We do have our museum curator report, which you receive every month. See if anyone has any questions or can anybody follow up? If someone might be able to provide us some during his council report. We'll start it with council report with Councilor Martinez.
All right, so, like you said, summer reading has started at the library. We got a total of 71 kids registered for that. We hope every single one of them finishes that successfully. They are doing their weekly, I don't remember what last week was, painting. And then, this week, tomorrow, they're doing Heritage with, I can't pronounce her name.
Was it Ben's World last week? Hooten?
Yeah, and they're gonna be doing some stuff on like German heritage and whatnot over there, so... Which will be fun for the kids. They have something like 40 kids show up last week, so, I mean, they're doing good over there. We are looking at what our options are. The roof is leaking once again. So, we need to figure out what the options are there. I've spoke with Kyle, and I'll be continuing to speak on that. So, we have fireside last night. Got to talk about a few things, some good feedback for some stuff that I can, I can look into. And then, we have a, I was with the American Legion with Commander this morning for their meeting. They have the first annual community veteran outreach barbecue. It's actually gonna be out at the Crowley County Fairgrounds. They're hoping to actually do some stuff like that here in the future, so I want to support them. And if it's okay, we just put this out on our info board to support that. It is the...
This Saturday.
14th, so next, is it this Saturday?
Yes.
It is this Saturday, okay. So, I won't be able to be out there, but it's 10 to 4:00 out at the Crowley County Fairgrounds. Tons of stuff going on. We were talking about the list of people they got out there, so there's gonna be lots of fun stuff. And then, I just wanted to share something I saw on word of mouth. Give a shout out to our Public Works guys and our trash guys in particular, you know. I know it's not much to wave with them little kids, they stand out there waving with the big trucks, but if that makes them little kids' day, then we should all be waving at little kids because I'm a little kid some days too. So, I just, I don't know who was in that truck today, but a big shout out to them for smiling and waving at that kid. And that's all I got today.
All right, I'd start mine, I'll start this one with the two shout outs. I'd like to do a shout out to the swimming pool staff, lifeguards. The first day they opened actually was when the second graders all went in, two classrooms, probably 50, 60 kids. And I gotta admit, those gals were on the ball. There was two boys wrestling in, one of them kind of took it a little bit. She was in there right away, saw it. The way they rotated, kept the knives, I mean, if you have kids or go in there, grandkids, or if you go there, as far as I'm concerned, from what I saw, they were spot on, well-trained. Your kids would be safe there from what I witnessed, so I'd like to do a shout out to them. Two weeks ago, I did a shout out to the gentleman, Lorenzo, I can't remember his last name or if that was his last name, but on Ninth and Capultra or...
Capulpa. Yeah, that's what I said.
Anyway, I did a shout out to him last week because he did, from this, from the alley to 10th Street, out in the curb to gutter, cleaned it all up on its south, got rid of all the dirt, weeds, everything from there. This week, I was doing my walk, the person across the street on the corner of Capulpa and 10th was the same way, they had everything swept up. I stopped in the city here, it was too early, I was getting knocked on the door, but it was an early walk for me. I didn't want to wait to melt. But he had probably every eight feet piles of dirt, gravel, sand piled up. So, I asked the city if they can do a, and they did, they wrote it down. I hadn't made it back either to see if it was. But I, as a citizen, I thank you for doing that. As citizens, you're stepping up, you're not only just, I mean, you're helping out. You know, people say it's up to the city. It's not up to the city, I mean, it's up to us, you know, this is our community. So, the people I see doing that, thank you, you know, and I hope it spreads. So, shout out there. Everybody involved with this last weekend, the Tri-County Bash, what I call it, a lot. I made it early, my grandson, he didn't want to be there, he wanted to get it over with right away, but that's the way he is, that's why I took him early. But all the volunteers, everybody involved with that, everybody, the vendors, very great, awesome time. Thank you for all doing that. Black Hills Energy, the wildlife planning for wildfires. They invited some city council, the local fire department, Wardway Fire Department, everybody was there. But their plans were, it's been in the paper too, but I'd like to do a shout out for them for being the preparedness, being proactive, not waiting to be reactive. And if you haven't heard, basically, what, mostly in the summer, when we get heavy winds, storms are gonna be predicted, they're gonna shut down power to avoid wildfires. So, planning stages, that's what this is here with the communities, the fire departments, talking with them, the plans they have in place in case power could be out for minutes, it could be out for days. Don't know, but if you're at home and you're on a machine that needs electricity, Wardway, I did have a chance to talk with Rocky Ford, but I'm sure they're the same way. Wardway, they have plans, they have generators, communicate with the community, with the citizens. So, Black Hills, shout out for being proactive on that and coming in, talking with everybody. Some good information there, as citizens, we need to take heed and be prepared for something, generators or whatever you're gonna do. So, thank you on them. City employees, as you said, last half, two weeks ago, I see, you know, you see the guys out there working in the hot summer and the cold winter? Honk your horn, tell them thank you, you know, give them a wave, a smile, you know? If you have a cold water, give them a cold water, offer them. So, they're out there in all the extremes, elements, day and night. So, as council member Martinez said here, thank them for being there. Treatment Plant, I think it was Ralph did a lot on the fence here at the park repairing that. That's been, water treatment been repaired, good job there. Arts Commission, there was no meeting this month. Some of the shows they have shown was two weeks ago, for two weeks, because it was a new release. New release has got to be shown for two weeks. Lilo? Lilo and Stitch, I want to make sure I have the name right. They averaged, I do it all the time, but they averaged about 375 patrons or visitors each weekend. So, a total of about 750 people over the two weeks. That was awesome, awesome, great, you know, coming out, great turnout. Last week, Mission Impossible, not so great. You know, they only had about 125 people over the three days. I understand you go to movies that you like and everything, but they self-support them, you know? This weekend is the Last Rodeo. I'm not, I can't remember what's gonna be the week after, but this weekend, they're showing Last Rodeo. You can also support The Grand, it's also the largest screen along Highway 15, East of Pueblo. So, you want to see a big screen? This is the place to come. You know, Mahana, come down, you know, swing, Rocky Ford, Magic, Wardway, come over, watch a large screen. You can buy your drinks.
They provided popcorn and small drinks during the...
Yeah, they did. They were one of the vendors, The Grand did give for this weekend's Tri-County thing, they give out free popcorns and free drinks to everybody that wanted, so drink, great with them on there, the volunteers on that. You can help support The Grand by going to the shows, you can rent ads, advertise, you can rent the billing for whatever you have venue, whatever you want to do. You can, you can put a bid on the old posters, and they have a lot of old posters. I have one John in to look, but I want to do it one of these days. They said they go back for years, and these are the posters that come out from the movie industry. So, if you're interested, might go in there and ask for an appointment to see what they have there and put a bid on some of them old posters. You don't need to attend the movie to buy snacks, drinks. You can go in there, buy them, and take them out. You can volunteer for whatever they need help around there, so help support the local grand theater. This Saturday, as Mr. Martinez hit on, they're having the VA, the local American Legion and the VA out of Wardway are working together for the first annual community veteran outreach. They're gonna have VA resource officers there to help vets or veteran family members to fill out information, tell them what they're entitled to, help them fill out information if they needed, show them, guide them. So, the resource officers are gonna be there. There's gonna be some military recruiters there if anybody's interested in that. They're also gonna have a food drive. You can go donate some food. They're gonna have out-house races. I don't know, I mean, if it's at 5:00 in the morning, I'd probably win. But this doesn't start, their hours are gonna be from 10:00 to 4:00 a.m. They're gonna have outhouses, races, music by Arch Valley Entertainment.
4:00 a.m.? They're going all night long?
4:00 p.m.
We didn't tell Rob.
10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. I transposed that, sorry, bud, yeah. But, yeah, please go out, it's fun, and game for the kids, the food vendors, everything. If you have, want, enter their outhouse race, you can contact Matt Archuleta. I think he's with the Wardway VA. You can phone him at 505-609-0509. So, please, if nothing else, get out there, attend, take some family, go out there, get a little heat, enjoy the community, meet some veterans. If it wasn't for vets, who would know where we would be today? You know, they helped protect us, they served the country. So, all of that. And who's the volunteers for Saturday? Saturday is Flag Day. I've got with Mr. Rodriguez here, he's with the American Legion. You know, sadly, there's not that many vets around that are involved, actively involved. A lot of the older ones can't do it now, or they're passing on. 21 guns salute, the honor guards, it's hard for them. My dad passed away years ago. We had to get one out of Pueblo to come down for that. But with that being said, we need volunteers, they need volunteers to help put up flags and then pick them up at the end of the day. If you're interested, you can meet Saturday behind the fire station at the American Legion post at 8:00 a.m. to load the flags up, go out, it takes no more than an hour. And then, at 5:00 p.m., be back there to go out and help pick them up. And, you know, display is Flag Day. They're having a big shindig on Saturday for the military, it's the anniversary, 250 years for military. They're having a big shindig on Saturday for the, the military, it's the anniversary, two hundred and fifty years for military. So, uh, that's in Washington, there the, JR?
It's not only Flag Day, it's the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of the US Army.
It's the Army, yeah, two hundred and fifty years on, on Saturday, so there's also a big, lot going on with that. So, please get out, celebrate one way or another, please help with the vets, you know, if, if you can do that. I recommend, if, if you do show up, bring a vest. Last, last week, uh, two weeks ago, we went out, we didn't have vests, we probably should've, 'cause we're on the street. Uh, they did say they had some, but if you have one, you wanna, you wanna help out, please bring a vest. Uh, sidewalk fifty-fifty, as Stacy said, we have people sign up, and now sadly, a lot of them are backing out due to cost, I understand. But if you have sidewalk that needs repair here in the city, people, citizens, the city's willing to match fifty-fifty of what it costs, up to two thousand five hundred from the city. So, if it's a five thousand dollar project, the city will match half of that. And I understand it's money out of your pocket, but, you know, it is a sidewalk on your residence, you know? If you're interested, please get in there and help out, make, make it safer for the people walking, people like me that are out there, tripping over everything or having to walk in the street. So, please help make the city safer and, uh, partake in this, we'll be doing it again next year. So, we'll be doing this winter, if you're not, we'll be doing it again next year, so get on the ball to sign up for that. Uh, and on a personal side for me, one of my things is, uh, my, at my house, my, uh, garage, it's two-car garage, but it's a drive-through, so I park one front and the other. My wife parks her Camaro, it's a little profile car, super sport, just Grandma's hot rod. But, uh, she drives it out the back through the alley, and I'm sorry to say, but people along where I live, neighbors, if you're listening, weeds are three foot tall in that alley. It's clean and wet, please, my wife can't drive that car in and out with weeds like that. I do what I do behind mine, it's clear behind mine, and I can only do so much, you know, let's be responsible, take it upon ourselves, we are, we're citizens, property owners are responsible for keeping the alleyway clean. So, please, that's a personal thing on me. And, uh, local, local police department has some brochures out there. Uh, you can go in there and pick them up, they're by the window. This is a firearms and suicide prevention brochure, gives a lot of great information in here. You know, people with, uh, at-risk suicide, for suicide, and others, uh, suicide warnings, reaching out can save a life. It also has firearm stories, fifty percent of all suicides are with firearms. Uh, they do give out free locks for your weapons, if you have them, go in there, they'll give you one or two or three, whatever, I don't know, there's a limit, but they'll give you multiple locks for your weapons, if you have them there, go in there, and, uh, they're for free. Uh, Veteran Crisis Line, dial nine eight eight, press one. You can text nine eight eight for a trained crisis counselor from the crisis text line for a free twenty-four-seven service. National Suicide Crisis Lifeline, call nine eight eight. Uh, you can, they help you find mental health providers, you can visit, uh, mental health professionals, walk-in clinics, emergency departments, urgent care centers. Uh, you can go, all those places are available. So, please, people, if, if you're needing something, please reach out, if you know somebody that might be in need, talk to them, give them a shoulder, give them some, you know, something to, just somebody to listen to a lot of times. So, please watch out, suicide is, is bad, you know, no matter what time of year. And I'll close on this with one last thing, being Flag Day on Saturday, I'd like to read this, it is a quote, "The flag represents not just our cherished values of peace, security, and liberty, but also reminds us of responsibilities we have as citizens. Every goal you're associated with the flag is a result of the duties fulfilled." Calvin Coolidge. So, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen.
So, I just wanna say thank you to, uh, the people that did come out for the Grown Ups Who Love Us barbecue on May thirty-first. Uh, thank you also to everyone that came out, helped with, set up, worked hard, made Saturday happen, um, for Cruisin' in the Summer. Um, there were a few people that weren't able to be there, um, the first year without RC, um, that was, that was tough. Um, and we also did Saturday without a couple of other people. Um, losing Tyler last week was a very big loss, um, and it was sad to not have him there on Saturday. So, um, thank you to everyone that came out. Um, know that our thoughts and prayers are with the Soraya family. Um, Tyler was wonderful, and we will miss him very much. Um, on a happier note, um, we've got a couple weekends coming up, at the end of, uh, June, the Arch Valley Community Cancer Support Group is having a Survivor Weekend. They've got a car show, a poker run, um, and vendors in Depot Square, as well as their Survivor Dinner in Danfoss Saturday night. Um, Freedom Fest, this'll be our third year doing Freedom Fest, um, second year here in Rocky Ford, um, that'll be on Fourth of July. Um, Duck Race tickets are on sale, I've got all of those, uh, printed and ready to go. So, stop by and get your Duck Race tickets. All proceeds from the Duck Race do go to the Rocky Ford Fireworks Fund. I think that's all I've got. Um, the fair is getting ready to get going too, Sally's working hard, so watch out for that, it's coming down the pipeline.
Thank you. Um, so, uh, being that we have a really long agenda tonight, and, uh, the audio issue is, I'll make this brief, um, we're very pleased to have people come here and share their knowledge, uh, of the Hearst Trophy, and the museum's very excited to be able to present this to the community. And I also wanna give a shout out to Nancy Martin, who's our most dedicated volunteer here, um, uh, joining us today, so, uh, thank you for that. And with that, I'll give it over to the mayor. Alright, Nick, you can, you can kill that audio, we're, we're running off of, uh, our two cannon over here.
Oh, thank you.
I'm used to it.
Actually, you're very good.
Couple thing, uh, so I'll get started, uh, Children and Nature Everywhere, um, that's a program and a grant, um, that Stacy, uh, was, was awarded for the city, um, I don't know if it was last year or now, going on two years. Uh, but that team was up here from DC, or Boston and LA, uh, providing some technical assistance, so we were able to give them a tour of, uh, Rocky Ford, all the green spaces, um, and, uh, do some planning on, uh, you know, what the future of those look like. Um, that was, uh, over two days, two, three days, so Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday. Um, that Tuesday, Monday evening, we also had a planning commission, um, so we'll have a few recommendations, uh, coming from the planning commission on tonight's agenda. Uh, I haven't had a planning commission meeting since, uh, last year, so that was our first, and we had four on the, uh, agenda, and, um, there's one that is gonna be, uh, rolled over to next month, so we'll be anticipating a planning commission meeting in, uh, July. Um, part of the Children in Nature Everywhere visit, uh, we also had a, a meeting, um, Stacy and I and the Children in Nature Everywhere team, uh, met with Dr. Snyder and, uh, school president, um, Sandra Lundquist. Um, so also, they're just kinda talking about, uh, the, the schools' green spaces and, um, the future of Jefferson and Washington, um, so they kinda gave us an update on, on, um, where that demolition is, they're still looking at October for that to be completed. Um, we did learn also that the school still does have a lease on the solar, uh, panels out there, um, that lease, uh, doesn't end until twenty thirty, so the school, um, is, uh, their plan is to maintain ownership of the land until at least twenty thirty. Um, but in between, until then, um, they do plan to keep that as an open space that is accessible to the community, um, but we'll be working closely with them, um, you know, seeing out whatever we can do to support that and just make sure that we have, um, another, yeah, playground and green space, all that. Playground equipment that was over on the Washington-Jefferson side, uh, is staying in there. Um, they did already pull out some of the stuff that was in the blight, um, but it's, everything you see out there, um, is gonna stay there, and they'll be, uh, maintaining that. Cruisin' in the Summer, we had that this Saturday. Um, I can't remember what, what year this was, I feel like it was nineteen-ish around there, um, but Tri-County Family Care Center also celebrated their thirtieth year this year. Um, so, yeah, great, uh, great event, uh, beautiful weather, and, uh, um, I got the, uh, I guess unfortunate opportunity to take a pie in the face by, uh, Commissioner Nobinchu. Um, it was all for a great cause, but, uh, yeah, got to, you know, pie in the face in eighty, ninety-degree weather is really, uh, really, I, I didn't really-
Refreshing.
I didn't think about this part, it was, it was whipped cream, um, and I, you know, wiped my face and got back to business and kinda wiped my shirt, and about, about two hours later, um, kinda started, started smelling a little bit, I kinda smelled like a, like a little baby when they have the milk all over their shirt. But, uh, yeah, and another wonderful Cruisin', and, um, yeah, wanna say thank you to, um, the police department, fire department, Public Works, um, Parks and Rec, everyone played their part in, uh, making sure that, um, was good. We had all of our trash cans out, had, um, all the, the lawns mowed and cleaned up, um, all of our barriers out there, and, um, everyone had their boots, and there was giveaways, and a lot of good information out there. So, thank you to the city for, uh, continuing to support that event. Um, this morning, this morning I attended the Mayor's Alliance to End Hunger, so it's a nationwide, um, alliance of, of mayors, um, working together to try to eradicate hunger in, um, their communities, but also, you know, across the nation. Um, so, just different, hearing different initiatives that are happening, uh, you know, most of these are some of our larger cities across the nation, um, but, uh, you know, it's really good to be able to also share, you know, some of the initiatives happening in, uh, Rocky Ford and, um, southeast Colorado. Uh, moving ahead, we will have CML Conference at the end of this month, and coming up on the agenda later, we'll be, uh, taking action on vacating our June twenty-fourth meeting, but, um, council will be up there and, uh, along with Stacy at the CML Annual Conference, um, July fourth. We, we heard from Nicole about Freedom Fest, but, yeah, we'll have our, uh, annual Fourth of July celebration and our fireworks. Um, so anyone listening out there in, uh, Lahana, come on over, we, we'll have our, uh, fireworks display as always, and there's room for you. Um, but everyone, let's, uh, get out there and enjoy that event. Hit the duck race, I know they had to buy more ducks last year, so let's make them buy some more ducks this year for next year.
I've got six hundred for sale this year, six hundred ducks. Sold out three hundred and fifty last year, so.
How much are they?
They're five dollars apiece. Five dollars. Get your duck tickets.
Anyone doesn't know, that the Duck Race goes to support, um, the fireworks show for that following year, so, um, yeah, a little way to, uh, contribute to that five-dollar race, and, um, and, yeah, you could also possibly win the big prizes. Um, on a more serious note, I, I did also wanna recognize, um, just a huge loss that we had in our community, um, recently this month. Um, so we lost a, a young thirteen-year-old man, um, named Tyler Soria. And, uh, it's, yeah, it's, it's really hard, um, really hard to think about, had a couple opportunities, um, to cross paths with him and work beside him, and, um, yeah, just, just see, you know, how amazing of a person he already was. Um, attended his funeral and heard some of the stories from, from different people. Um, one of, former councilwoman, uh, Jeanette Fuller, shared, uh, she had a really close relationship with him, um, and, uh, just, you know, kinda shared, you know, how, how beyond his, his age he was. Um, this was a kid that was, you know, uh, getting out there working, um, helped Jeanette lay some drywall, told, you know, he was twelve at that time, told her he could, uh, YouTube it and figure it out, and he did just that. Um, he, uh, was a young entrepreneur, he had a, uh, auto detail business that he was, um, working, but it wasn't, you know, just, uh, putting up a sign, grabbing a bucket, and washing some cars. If he was like, creating forms and having his clients fill out these forms, and he was, um, you know, inspecting the vehicles and, uh, you know, checking out cubic feet of, of the vehicles and pricing where he should be. Um, and, and at Small Town Project, we had, you know, a couple opportunities to, to have him volunteer over there, and, uh, it, it's just, it's gonna be a huge loss. Um, but it, it was a, a beautiful celebration of, of his life, and, uh, you know, his huge, um, contribution to, to our community and to our people in, you know, his short time. And, um, I think our community really stood up and, and honored that. Um, there was, you know, uh, he passed away July first, and his funeral was, um, July, um, sorry, June. Um, I might be, I might be a little off, but, uh, I'm looking at July's calendar. Um, it, it was, it was a quick, um, move, but, um, the American Legion stepped in and, uh, provided flags, so back, uh, Tyler was a very patriotic young man, um, loved this country, and, uh, you know, his parents wanted to honor that. Um, so the American Legion stepped in and, uh, they provided, um, numerous flags, um, for the, uh, the funeral and for people in the community. Um, and there was a, a final ride, um, that, that they took. And Tyler's dad is a trucker, his family's a trucking family, and, and they were able to do a final ride with his casket, um, on a, on a truck around Rocky Ford. And, um, I, I was following along in that parade, and we got out west of town, um, over to seventy-one, turn in south on eighteen, and I saw the, I saw, uh, the, the flag out there, Wayne Walters' flag, lowered at half-staff, and I knew we, we weren't at any half-staff, um, status at that time, so I, I knew why that flag was lowered. Um, and it's just, it's amazing how everyone, um, you know, was willing to pull together. You know, a lot of people knew Tyler, but also there was many more that didn't. Um, so I, I wanna say thank you to, to the Rocky Ford community, and also to, uh, his kind of extended community, um, over in Fowler. I did wanna share just some words that his mom, um, recently posted, and this, uh, this goes to the entire, um, city of Rocky Ford. With heartfelt thanks to our community, during the most difficult times of our lives, after the loss of our precious son Tyler, we have been surrounded by an outpouring of love, kindness, and support from our community. From the prayers, messages, meals, visits, and shared memories, every gesture, big or small, has helped carry us through this heartbreaking time. We are deeply grateful to live among such caring and compassionate people. Thank you for standing with us, mourning with us, and honoring Tyler's memory with so much love. Your support has reminded us that even in the darkest moments, we are not alone. With all our love and appreciation, the Soria family. And I think that speaks exactly to who we are as a king bee in Rocky Ford. And, uh, that's, that's all I have, so thank you, um, everyone here, everyone out there, everyone in our city.
Alright, we'll move on to our, uh, old business. We have item twelve-one. It's Resolution Number Ten, Series Twenty-Twenty-Five, a resolution setting the meeting time for the City of Rocky Ford, City Council, regular meetings, uh, to move to six PM. If this would be effective, July eighth. Um, open this up for any discussion, or I look for a motion.
I move that we, uh, approve Resolution Number Ten, Series Twenty, uh, Twenty-Five, to adjust the meeting time for the City Council session to six PM.
I'll second.
We'll all second that.
Second for Martinez. Can you call the vote?
Mosby.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Mullins.
Yes.
Aron.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor Gurley.
Yes.
Alright, so that motion is approved, that resolution is approved. Um, so, again, our meeting times will be moved to six PM, um, starting July eighth. Currently, our meeting times are seven PM, um, so those will be moving down an hour to six PM, starting July eighth. And, uh, it will, it is noted on the agenda, and it will be noted, um, on, uh, future agendas, and as well as the website. And, uh, JR, if you can also make a special highlight of that one. Thank you.
We can all get home before bedtime.
Yeah. Item number, uh, twelve-two, um, will be to re- review, uh, letters of interest, uh, received for council award to vacancy. And we do have, uh, Mr. Johnny McMurray. Murray, Mr. Johnny McMurray here in attendance, so I'll ask you to come on up, and if you wanna, um, state your name and, and give us a vote introduction, and then we'll have a couple questions that council will ask.
Well, I'm Johnny McMurray, and I've been living here in Rocky Ford for the last three years, and I'd like to be part of the team that makes the place so great.
You know, we, we did get our letter of interest, and we'll have time to do that. So, I open it-
We did get our letter of interest and we'll have time to do that. So I open it up to uh, if anyone wants to jump in with one of the questions.
I'd just like to just start out by saying thank you for the interest. Thank you for stepping up. You know, it's responsible.
I'm not gonna ask him a question. I'll defer that one to you. I'd just like to make a comment though as to where all up here, some are, some are appointed, uh, some are voted, voted in by the, by the residents, the citizens. But by us being up here, we're accepting the responsibility of the community. We're leaders. We need to act like it. We need to lead with responsibility and show respect. And uh, it is a position that everybody looks at. And we need to honor it and take pride in it. That's it for me.
I'll ask him a question. Just because. What skills and experience do you have that you believe would be beneficial to you as a council member?
I have a pretty positive and adaptive personality. I mean, good at rolling with changes and, you know, working with other people as a team. I've, I've managed over a hundred people in a field of watermelons and onions. So I know how to work with a lot of people, a lot of people that have different opinions and different outlooks on things. So I think that just to be able to join you guys and and have another opinion to throw into the mix, I think that that would be a benefit to the team. And I love Rocky Ford. So like I said, I just wanna be part of what makes it so great. I think that's what would make me a good member of your team.
We have sort of a list here of the questions we asked. So I'll, I'll stick to this list. Before I do that, and it sort of plays into this question, I'll just make a statement. You've expressed that you're a business owner in the community. Um, that being the case, we often vote on things that impact the business. There may be situations where you have to recuse yourself from those. In that situation, it may actually be up against you because you may have had somebody be for your business. That's just a statement. And then the question would be, do you have any personal or professional relationships that could become a conflict of interest while serving in the council?
No, I don't believe so.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
I'll go ahead and ask. Based on what you know about city government, what do you see as top priorities for the city and why?
Uh, I think top priorities of the city is to hear the citizens of the city. And I think the reason for that is because that's, in my view, would be the purpose of the City Council, of the city, is to listen to what the people want in the city and then find out what the majority of that is and deliver it.
Uh, just one, one statement I'd like to make is that, you know, we see your address here, um, and uh, and also from your letter of interest. So, um, you know, we know that you're one of our business owners, um, one of our main street businesses. So I want to say thank you for that investment to downtown Rocky Ford and to our economy. Um, and then uh, also knowing that you're over on that representation from, you know, the the north side of the tracks, north side of the highway is always something that, you know, I'm looking at because I kind of know everyone else here is, is on, almost everyone's on the the other side. Um, so I think that's always important to have that spread.
You two are almost neighbors.
Yeah.
Holler down the street. I drive around with house every time I go home. How does that work?
The rest of us can't walk down your street.
So y'all can't come in our neighborhood all the time? That may be a benefit.
Anything else there? Look for uh, look for a motion from Mr. McMurray?
I'd like to make a motion that we appoint uh, Johnny McMurray for the open seat in Ward 2.
I second.
Here we have that motion from Councilman Roberts. That's second. From uh, Councilman Mosby. Call the vote?
Roberts.
Yes.
Mullins.
Yes.
Barone.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Mosby.
Yes.
Mayor Guruley.
Yes. All right, so that appointment is approved unanimously 6-0. So Mr. McMurray,
it's time to get to business. So I'll have you kind of step up a little bit closer and um, Rebecca will read you the oath of office and we'll have you join us up here.
So where it comes to swear or affirm either one, whatever you feel comfortable. So I need you to raise your right hand. And I.
I.
Go ahead.
Johnny McMurray.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
That I, that you will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Colorado.
And the Constitution of the State of Colorado.
And the laws of the State of Colorado.
And the laws of the State of Colorado.
And you will faithfully perform.
And I will faithfully perform.
To the best of your ability.
To the best of my ability.
The duties of City Council Member, Ward 2.
The duties of City Council Member, Ward 2.
For the City of Rocky Ford.
For the City of Rocky Ford.
And we'll have you sign.
He'd get a whole month as a plaintiff before he has to run.
Right.
No packets come out in August?
They do. So he'd get, you know, six weeks.
Before he has to do his petition. Petitions come out in August. Yeah, so he'll have to run in August to maintain his seat.
To keep his seat. You have to run in the next election.
We're gonna, we're gonna give him a packet for the new.
Do you have to run at the next election?
You do have to go through that.
Or nobody will.
The rest of us are all here except for him. He has to.
If he runs on the post, we won't waste money on the poll.
Right. You're the only one, the other one out.
Thank you very much.
The two appointed seats.
Nice to have you on board.
Thank you.
All right, just come on up.
Welcome.
Very much.
Want some sugar?
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Thank you.
I did not. I didn't. There was one in my drawer. There was one on my table. And there's one.
Maybe there were seven.
Yay!
All right, let's.
I don't know what else he's gonna need.
All right, our next item, we have uh, 12.3 is the additional discussion, public murals on city-owned buildings and crosswalks. Um, and I'll just add in here um, that Zeke wasn't able to get a design over. Um, so yeah, I don't know if we wanna table this one. Um, kinda look to Council on that direction.
I make a motion that we table Agenda Item 12.3, additional discussion on uh, public murals of city-owned buildings and crosswalks.
Cause we can look at that again on the 8th and make a decision before the event on the 26th, correct?
Correct. Uh, one thing, I'll just uh, the prep is gonna begin next week. Um, so that building, it would still make it in there. Um, just on the 26th, when they were kind of finishing everything else up, that one would be um, in, kind of still in in process.
So are we, are we okay with there being a mural on there? Yes, there being a mural. We just wanna see what the concept is. Yeah, I think we're okay with the prep work happening so that it could be ready. And then when we make the decision on the 8th, then they would have a little more time to actually work on it, correct?
I don't think prep work's gonna hurt nothing.
No, cause I mean, I think we want the mural regardless. I think we just wanna see it on the set.
Rebecca, do you want to withdraw my motion? Because it seems like we're going in a different direction.
I don't wanna just blindly approve something. So I'm okay with prep work. Yeah, let's get that done.
Do we just need a general consensus on that or do we need a full vote?
For a table?
No. We want to allow them to prep the building, but we wanna approve the conceptual design before they actually, actually start the.
Well, make your motion as that then and vote on it.
Okay, I wanna make.
Just so they're aware that if they prep it and it votes no, that's for not.
Well, if they vote, if we veto the conceptual design, then they're gonna have to come back and that would then delay it. So it might behoove them to, I mean.
But I'm just saying, if we, they go ahead and prep it, but for some reason it doesn't go through, that's, you know.
It's just gonna get finished.
They'll be aware, yes.
Yep. Or the building will just get a fresh concrete.
Win or win either way.
I make a motion that we approve 12.3, public murals on city-owned buildings and crosswalks for prep work on the city-owned buildings.
And crosswalks.
And crosswalks pending approval of the design.
I second.
Is that right? I think that works.
So just uh, that one is approved. Um, so kind of approved for the initial prep work, um, pending approval of the concept design, which we'll review again on uh, July 8th. We have the motion from Roberts, second from Martinez. Call the vote?
Mullins.
Yes.
Barone.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Mosby.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
McMurray.
Yes.
And Mayor Guruley.
Yes.
Okay, so that's approved. 7-0. Our next item under new business, old, old business is uh, 12.4. And this is the relocation of the Hearst Trophy um, from the Rocky Ford City Hall Vault to uh, the Rocky Ford Museum. And I'll pass this one over to Councilman Mullins if you want it.
We've sort of hashed this out. Previous meetings if any of the residents want to talk about this further, but um, the council's kind of come to an agreement on this. So uh, this isn't a true conflict. I am on the museum board, so I will recuse myself for this and I'll look for the rest of the council to take action on it.
Well, then I motion that we approve the relocation.
One question?
Yeah.
I know we discussed it in the past, everything, but she had said tonight that it needs to be in a climate controlled. You have all of that?
It's got an air conditioner.
So it depends on like.
The humidity.
On how perfect you wanna go.
Right.
I mean, the Declaration of Independence is in a really crazy type of contraption, right? Um, it, I can, I'm, I feel confident in saying that our facility is better prepared to care for it than at City Hall. If that's a fair enough answer to your question.
It's just sitting in a vault here, so it'll be better over there.
We're not gonna be the Smithsonian. It's just, it's not within our capabilities, but we will do the absolute best of our ability to care for it.
Just going off of her recommendations.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yes. And it's advice well received.
And I motion that we. We approve the relocation.
That may work.
I second. Did you motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Call that vote Rebecca?
Barone.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Mosby.
Yes.
McMurray.
Yes.
Robert.
Yes.
Mullins.
I stand.
Mayor Guruley.
Yes.
That motion is approved and we will be relocating there. Over to the Rocky Ford Museum. Um, and uh, Chief, I'm sure we'll um, work together and they'll coordinate getting that moved over. Rebecca and everyone else. We have a chain of custody for that? We'll get one created?
We'll, we'll do one for us, but I don't know how we got it.
So the, the museum, to answer that question, has a chain of custody. Like it's in our software. So when we accession it, it'll have records of where it was taken by whom and how.
All I knew it was at, at one of the banks and then somehow we got it.
For a while, it was in the police department's evidence.
Yes, I saw that.
All right. We'll move on down to new business items. And the first one we have, 13-1, is a proposal to purchase a mechanical street sweeper. Look for uh, Rick, Rick Kuko, if you want to come on up.
Does everybody have, that should have been sent over about a week ago?
It was sent with their packet.
If you need a packet, I have one.
I think we've got it.
Everybody's got it? So we demoed it probably two and a half, three weeks ago. Mayor was there, Nick was there.
I'm not biased. I saw you guys playing.
Yeah, we took it out.
Y'all were having fun.
So it's a, it's a 2023, basically a demo model. It uh, mechanical. And I know we could sure use one. I know that on our, our line item for the HUTF, the 1%, the road and bridge, we didn't get a lot of buy-in on the concrete. We do have street signs. I don't know what that's totaled out to. But as we sit today, we have 361,0257 dollars and 75 cents in that line item. If you look, if you have the packet in front of you, I had the finance company put, and and I did, we did send some comparables over today. We sent four comps over. If if you look at the package, um, this finance company that we found, NGL GovCap, so if if we just talked to one that we demoed, cost is 189,000. They defer payments for 365 days. So we got a whole year until any of the payments start. I give you the zero, zero dollars down, the three, five, and seven-year payment on that. Does everybody, okay, everybody?
These are all leases?
No, this is, the first year we own it.
With the one-year deferred payment, what your interest starts day one?
No, we don't do anything.
Nothing for the first year?
365 days. Then you've got a $50,000 down, $100,000 down. And then option four, Nicole, is the fair market lease. And then at the end of that lease, you you have the option of either purchasing it, turning it back in, or re-leasing it for the value.
How would they value the machine after?
Couldn't tell. Five years. I mean, they'd have to come look at it. It's gonna depreciate just like anything else.
So basically, if we lease it for three, four, or five years and then we say we wanna buy it, we won't even know what we're gonna pay for it till they come and look at it?
Yeah.
After leasing?
I mean, just like a car, just like anything, whatever the value is.
What's warranty on it?
On the 2023, they'll give us a 90-day. I did, today I included what the cost on a new one would be. Um, I believe she emailed that over to you. Um, that's 261,000. That only buys you a one-year warranty. And that's not for any mechanic or wear and tear item. So main brooms, gutter brooms, drags, uh, conveyor, those are all considered wear items.
How many hours are on it, the used one?
It, it should have that on here. Let me see.
I didn't see nothing.
Yeah, I don't know that he put it. I can sure find out. It was very little. It it got rented out once. And and Aurora, I believe rented it out once for two weeks. Ferris runs out.
It's on, it's on page uh, 6. Um, and it's 493 hours.
Oh, it's in our email. It's not something we have in front of us.
I printed everything down.
It's in this one.
That big packet?
Page 6?
Not all of this.
There.
Yes, yes.
I did not print the big packet.
That's the, that's the one that we're looking for.
There's some copies that they're buying.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
So I guess I have a couple of questions beyond purchasing. So I guess I'd like to know what the plan is for, we buy a new street, like, okay, so we're buying a new street sweeper. What's the?
We're not buying me one. We're buying the city one.
So we're buying the city a new street sweeper. So we're buying us a new street sweeper.
Correct.
What is the plan for, what's the care plan? What, I mean, where, do we plan on putting somebody in at 40 hours a week? Is, are we gonna work on?
So you're talking about routes and stuff like that?
I mean, I I kinda wanna know, when we get this, what's the plan for it? Are we going to be using it 40 hours a week? Are we? Are we only gonna be doing main routes? Are we gonna get the whole town cleaned up? You know, what's the plan of action with it? How are we gonna keep it maintained?
I think initially, with staffing that we have right now, we would, we would look at doing routes, maybe two or three times a week. Um, initially, to set up a route, we have to post. So we would post no parking, figure out how that will be, what time constraints we would have trying to get done what we posted, first of all, and I would, I would like to see routes done two or three times a week. I think it's a little, be a little overzealous to try to say five days a week. Um, it would be nice to get to that, though. We, we could certainly use it everywhere.
So some of that, and I don't mean to interject, but some of that will rely on us to get the ordinances in place, to have cars moved, to make sure these routes are what they need to be to have posted for the citizens, so that this all flows cohesively.
So I, I think one of the things I'd like to see before we jump on this size of a purchase is that plan of how we plan to execute the usage of-
I just told you, we'd like to see
I, I know what you-
Two or three days a week, route sweeping.
Seasonal?
And start cleaning up. All right, you can go all year. I mean, unless it's snow. I mean, definitely using it in the fall.
Water, and it's, you gotta make sure everything's squinterized.
Are you good there on your comments, Nicole?
I guess if that's what I'm gonna get.
Well, what else would you like to say?
I, I would like to know what your plan of action is.
I just told you.
I bet you, but that's, that's very vague. I, I don't, and it's not-
What would you like to say?
I would like to see-
I mean, we got seven here, tell me what you'd like to say.
What you are going to do. Are we going to say, okay, these are our problem areas, they're, we're really gonna focus on this, is all of town gonna benefit for it? Or is only certain areas of town? We already know that the town doesn't want to help pay for us to get a street sweeper out there. I want to know if we're gonna get our money's worth out of spending $260,000 on a piece of equipment.
$189,000.
With the 90-day warranty?
The 261 is the new one. Excuse me, sir?
The 180, we're 180, now that's with a 90-day warranty, right?
Correct.
Yeah, let me speak a little bit, because I've, I've been involved in some of this. So, not only are we gonna get clean streets, whether we run three days or five days, which I believe, like, like Rick said, it's a ramp up, it's a learn how long a route's gonna take, so we can kind of design them. We can't design them now if we don't know how long it's gonna take to run that truck down a street, get it to dump site, get it back, you know, there's some things we have to work out, so those logistics are gonna have to come-
Can we get a ballpark idea of it?
Well, let's say we run wards, we have thirty wards.
Nicole, let's let, uh, Nick make his statement.
It can, it can be as simple as we have three wards here in the city of Rocky Ford, we break them into days, and if we can get a ward done in a day, awesome. Can we, maybe not in the beginning, but once things are cleaned up, maybe, I don't know. But I think that there's a lot more to look at this than just, my street is clean. We deal with, and we just sat down and spoke with Tony and Chief about compliance with our ordinances. One of the big issues we have here in Rocky Ford is abandoned vehicles sitting in streets. So along with this ordinance of street sweeper, if your vehicle is not moved, and I looked at some of the ordinances in the bigger cities, if your vehicle's not moved, it's towed. Bottom line. Well, boom, we've just cleaned up some abandoned vehicles off the streets. This is gonna benefit us in many ways than just a clean street. And when you go to other communities and you look at how clean their streets are compared to ours, it's starting to get a little embarrassing being here. So I would love to see clean streets, and I think that this is a good thing for the citizens. I understand, I was the one who got crucified on Facebook for putting that out there. I still stand by my suggestion on that. If we don't have to add that fee, that's fine. But I still think that a street sweeper is the right way to go.
Well, I, I think all departments can utilize it too after, um, you know, a wastewater cleanup, uh, doing a, you know, a water main, trash pickups, code enforcement, I mean, it's across the board. Even doing the fair, I mean, we go pick up every day, and we're out there sweeping stuff up for the whole time it's there.
Well, we hit it after, we, we spread sound on intersections, and we bring the, the street sweeper out that next day.
And that's a big thing for motorcycles too, after winter months, is being able to clean it up. It's just hard to sit here and say, I can do five days a week on a route, or, you know, two days, I think we started out to, what we've discussed within the department is, you know, two days a week, we go out and post, and then see how, how that goes. If we can get all the streets that we posted, we, we might be biting off more than we can chew, or we might have more and we could post the next time five or six more streets. Like bust the entire city up into routes like we have with trash. And I, I'd love to see it swept this way.
Will there be a fee as subscape?
Uh, that's up to you guys, I, I don't have anything to do with that.
We have to initiate some sort of, I think, change.
Yes, sir.
So I just wanted to get clarity then. It's not just gonna be exclusive for any particular neighborhoods, eventually it's gonna get to everyone, is that right?
That's what we're planning on, yes, sir. We, we need to get out and do it, and see what time it takes, bust a route up. Right now, we'd get with the police department, we would post streets for, for no parking. It doesn't do us any good right now if we went out and didn't post them. And then see what we could sweep in a day. See what we could sweep in a week, and see what we could sweep in a month, and then we'll have a, a realistic view to answer Nicole's question, what we're capable of.
Would that also cover Highway 50?
No. We don't see that, we couldn't get on it.
So-
But it could be possible.
I guess-
Nicole, that's, we'll pass it around, and then if there's a-
Just wanted to clarify the question.
That's fine, let's use our time effectively and, um, and kind of get that all out at once.
I've got a comment and a question, and the comment would be, I moved here in 98. Back then, we used to get a street sweeper in front of my house, I don't know, maybe once a month, couldn't be a little bit more out of the call. There was no ordinance, it just the people knew more or less when it was coming. And if you wanted it swept in front of your house, you moved it.
Yeah, we didn't, not a lot of people moved out of the way either when we had it going, but, um, yeah, I mean, this, this will be a, a work in progress to figure out routes and everything.
I think you might have a question.
Okay, the question I have is, uh, been working on the old one.
Now, if they look at the old for anything intriguing.
Yeah, well, so what they will do, we have them come out and look at it, we got a $1,500, $1,530.99 bill for what it would take to get that sweeper going. I'm not going, it was $32,000, they're almost $33,000 to get the old Pelican going. They charged us 15. They said that if we do end up purchasing this one from Ferris, they'll waive this almost $1,600 bill.
But they wouldn't take a trade in?
No, they, they don't want it either. They're, they're the ones that pretty much told us what it was worth, and it came down to almost scrap.
Scrap.
To get somebody to haul it away.
We, Thomas? Do you have?
Um, yeah, a couple of statements, and I think I'd have three questions for you. The, the issues that the council's gonna have is, the citizen's not happy with, with moving, uh, we've kind of seen that with Nick already. And, uh, the citizen's not willing to pay, uh, fees for a program operation, and I think realistically for a program like this, there's staffing requirements, there's maintenance requirements, something like this depreciates to zero in what, like, five to seven years, I assume. So at that point, we're looking at another substantial expense on that. So that's, that, those are just two concerns, but then the questions I have for you, um, and I'll give you time on each of these. The cost, just the sheer cost on this, because I know staffing, understaffing is a challenge with your department. This kind of money could provide, like, two employees for like five years for like the entire lease term. I mean, so I'm just wondering, is that more beneficial than a street sweeper to you?
Well, it's been a, a stated desire of the city, yeah, I mean, it would help storm drain, it would help across the board.
And then, I think that answered.
Can I, can I add something?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so if, if you take in, in account that we, we hire, like, just right now, we just hired some summer help, you guys have seen them around? And most of what they're doing is cleaning the curbs and gutter.
Gotcha.
We're already spending that money cleaning curbs and gutter.
And there's two of them, it's-
Gotcha, there's four.
There's four of them, so we'd be down to one dude running a street sweeper.
So, so the thing is, you know, uh, we're already using a lot of money just to have per people cleaning curbs and gutters.
Gotcha.
And we're taking away from other things that we need to do.
Gotcha.
Um, I mean, we get a lot of complaints every day about a bunch of situations, you know, curves that are broken on Main Street, or potholes, or, you know, different things here and there, that we can be utilizing other people for during that time. If we, if, if we had a, if we had a, a street sweeper, it would help us keep our storm drains clean. And you mentioned earlier, somebody cleaned the curbs, piled them up, and they want to know if we can pick them up. You know, things like that, I mean, it would, it would break down from us doing that kind of work. We'd be able to run the street sweeper by, pick up all these piles. It'll come back from citizens having to clean their curbs and gutters, which is their responsibility. But it, it would help, we'd be able to help the citizens, we'd be able to help us. We have, um, potholes, broken roads that are messed up, we have to blow them, sweep them, we take a street sweeper down that road, clean it up, it, it'll take away from the amount of time it takes for us to sweep and blow. It's just so many different uses.
The last question kind of, uh, rolls right into this, and then I, and then I'll just ask Stacy something real quick. I swear it's like a five-second question, I don't want to interrupt. In your opinion, is this like the best use of this money in here? Is there like a different piece of equipment that would benefit your department more, or is this?
Well, we need all kinds of equipment.
Well, that's what I'm getting at.
The needs already been expressed for a sweeper across the board, I mean, even when I talk to people, I mean, a lay-down machine would be nice, a milling machine would be nice.
Sure.
The reclaimer?
The reclamer would be nice.
A reclamer re-does asphalt, so it could relay asphalt, used asphalt.
At this point, though, you think this would be the best way forward at the time being?
I think starting moving forward, I think it would be a good idea. I think the whole department thinks that, yeah. It might, I've been arguing with, talking, not arguing, but talking to Rick a lot, and I've been dying to get a reclamer. But with the reclamer, you're gonna need other machines. So by the time you put all that together, we're just looking at $400,000 to $500,000. You can't just use a reclamer and just expect to be able to lay road.
Gotcha.
We don't have the equipment.
And then just quickly with Stacy, uh, we're talking about financing options here, and I know this is really a Kyle question, but is this actually something the city can finance, or are we, like, will we be approved for this, do you know?
Yes. I'll answer for it.
It would be a Kyle question, but if it's financing through this, uh, a company-
This company has agreed that those-
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they, they handle nothing but municipal accounting. Um, we're giving them everything.
I mean, I'll just make the statement, I, I've been in support of the street sweeper from the beginning. And I think we're probably, it's one of those decisions that the council's probably gonna make, that a lot of people are just gonna be unhappy with us. I mean, even if it costs a fee, like, the citizens, I think some of the citizens don't realize that, we pay those fees too. But, um, and we'll have to move our vehicles as well, but I, I think it would be benefit to the department and the city as a whole. And I'll, I'll, I'll pass it on to whoever wants to speak.
I'll jump in there, um, so one question I have, um, is, what was the cost to repair the old street sweeper?
Third, around $33,000.
So $33,000 there? All right.
It was $1,600 to evaluate it.
Okay. So one of the things that I want to say is, I know we had this discussion, this was on our March 11th agenda, and we had a pretty lengthy discussion, we had three different models, um, that we were looking at. Um, and from there, it, it didn't seem like there were enough questions answered. And Nicole brought the exact same questions tonight, uh, which are, seem to still be unanswered. Um, and a big part of that was, you know, what is the plan? This very large purchase, um, you know, what is the plan for the operations, what is the plan for maintenance? And another thing was, you know, looking at, we also want to see those comparisons of what it's gonna cost to get our existing street sweeper, um, operational, and, you know, we kind of were under the assumption that that thing was just long gone, and, uh, you know, a little bit after that, I know you guys started looking at it, because we seen that it was driven over to Public Works and it was out there. So yeah, I still feel like the questions that Nicole have are, um, there was, you know, 90 days to provide a, you know, a, a plan around those, and I feel like we're still, um, yeah, we don't, we don't have all the information there. And I think that's a big part of it, you know, I, I really want to see us have a street sweeper, I think that's a critical piece of equipment for a city to have, and especially a city of our size. We know that all the other benefits that it has, and, you know, keeping the gutters clean, keeping the, the stormwater drains clear, uh, making sure we don't have weeds and flowers growing in, in the gutter and, and the curbs. I know Nanette has, I mean, her lawn is extended, have, you know, some of those are like that, where the, the dirt has grown, the silt has grown, and how we have lawns extending into the, the streets. So I, I know that's huge, it's important, and we want to see those. Um, I also believe that we're, you know, with this technology, and street sweepers aren't new, but, um, you know, just where we are in today's age, uh, I, I really don't want to see any of our guys out there working with their hands. Um, I think, you know, everyone can be used to much more effectively across the city, and let those machines, you know, do the work for us. This is coming out of the 1% sales tax, and then a mix of that with the HUTF, which is our highway and use transportation fees, which we receive. So there is money in there, we heard about $300 and something thousand.
361 as of today.
Part of that, we still do have about $200,000 or, yeah, I don't know what the safe number to call that on sidewalk projects that Elgin Concrete is already contracted on. So we know we have a little bit there, so with that 300, when we look at, you know, what are some of the other things we can do? We know we still have a lot of streets that need attention, um, and that money right now really won't be, um, we're not gonna have enough money to do any, any of those streets. Sidewalks seem to be, you know, kind of covered, there was a big initiative there. So, yeah, is it, you know, looking at additional equipment, is it looking at saving and, um, you know, being able to, uh, save enough until we can get another stretch of streets done? I think those are some of the, the questions that I have, but the big thing is, um, I think Nicole's questions are really important to, um, for me, uh, to, to give me enough to, you know, support this $190,000 purchase. So that's all I have, I'll kind of open it back up, if anyone has any additional questions or, um, comments they want to share.
Comments, it just, it's a lot of money for a 90-day warranty, a lot more money for a one-year warranty. Some of the machines we looked at here prior, I think there were three or four examples, if I remember right, they were about 10 years old, and there were like 2,500 hours. This thing here is one year, two years old, it's got 500 hours. 90-day warranty on this one for 190, the other one's averaged about 100,000 if I recall, right? I don't think there was warranties on them, you know, but I mean, virtually this server, like, 90 days is not much of a warranty.
You barely be getting under our belts.
Yeah, I mean-
Well, that's just any street sweeper you buy, only has a one-year warranty, no matter what.
But 500.
Sometimes a chassis has, this is a chassis now, so chassis would have more, but-
What does the, what is the one that needs to be fixed have on it?
That's an Elgin Pelican, it has nothing, it's a 89. It's an old.
How many hours does it have on it?
Right at the wood.
Hour meter works.
Got a lot, yeah.
But I mean, if you put, if you put what you said needs to be put into it to make it work again, would it be as reliable?
No, we were told even by more than Ferris that it's not. I mean, to put that money in, it's, could you get that money out? We were told no. So it is a mechanical sweeper, it's what we want.
I'm all for cleaner streets and having a street sweeper myself. My, my concern is that it's a giant portion of the remainder of the budget.
It exceeds the remainder of our budget, because that $300,000 has money coming out of it already, so-
I mean, for me, I would-
Well, you still have HUTF, road and bridge, and the 1% coming in every, you have that coming in every month.
All right, all right.
How much comes in every month on that?
We're still with, we're still with McMurray over here.
So my thought is, this one has 500 hours on it and only a 90-day warranty. And it's a big gamble, because it has that many hours on it and that little of a warranty, it seems like it would be, I don't know, I, to me, it just seems better if it would, if we could fix the, the other one and spend a small amount of the budget, and leave plenty of budget left for other things that are needed too.
Sometimes with 30, 33,000 down, it's all their gamble is bigger than spending a ton of money.
That's gonna be my devil's advocate, what happens when we put that $30,000 into it?
No guarantees.[1765.18]
In 90 days, it's gone.
We, yeah, if you want to follow up with a statement to him, we'll get it over to you.
That would, that's pretty much what my, what my biggest concern is, is that we would be using all of the money. And then after it's paid for, then, because my understanding was that that, that would be coming out, that would be added on to everybody's water bill, right? Like eight dollars more or something like that?
No, just, yeah, backup there, that was kind of a, a what if that Councilman Martinez threw out there. Uh, but no, this would be coming out of our 1% sales tax, which is already there for street sidewalks or other physical improvements and our, um, highway user tax or user.
I wish I was more in the loop on other things that were, you know, that were needed right now. So that I'll be, you know, I mean, when you're, when I'm thinking about this giant amount of money and it's like, okay, that's not going to leave anything left for anything else.
We need a quarter of a billion dollars worth of, um, you know, lot distribution. About a quarter of a billion dollars in roads, probably. No, it's not, probably not that much, probably about 50 million.
I guess to finish, I'm, I'm for a sweet, a street sweeper, but I'm, I don't have enough understanding of what other needs are, are not met yet. And where are we going to get those funds if we use it all up on this street sweeper?
JR?
This is not the first time the Pelican has been down. This is the equivalent of putting money into a 250,000 mile vehicle. You've got 250,000 miles on it, how much money are you going to put in it at that point? In other words, this may only have a 90 day warranty, that Pelican don't help have any warranty.
Nick, Nicole, follow up. Robert, sorry.
Uh, if we turn down the option of getting the street sweeper and just saying the 300,000 for the new one or even the used one at 190, uh, the money stays there. What can we use the money on? Was it for sidewalks and streets? Can we do any more with streets? We still have streets here going north and south, Saturday, Thursday.
We have 18 utility cuts we could address. Yeah, that's something that we wanted to bring too, but we figured we're going to have to wait till finally. But you, you got to understand, how often does HUTF, the Road and Bridge and the 1% come in? I mean, we're, we're still going. So by the time you get through the first quarter of 2026, which will count for this year, it's, it's going to be considerably more than what we have right now. We didn't spend a third on the concrete project. The sign project, we're going to do everything in-house. Do you have a rough on what we spent on signs and?
Uh, 57.5.
Okay.
Is on the size, that doesn't include any of the cross pieces. They're still giving me that.
Yeah.
The initial invoice on that or the quote was like 63,000.
So if you take 60 there and take 20 on the, on the concrete, we're 80 grand that's coming out of that fund.
20 on what, concrete?
We only had, we only had.
Oh, 50, 50, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, we only had one person sign up today. What was?
There's three total.
Yeah, okay, we had one more, so yeah, three. Um, so, but I mean, it's, it's entirely up to you guys. Or we can pave in front of Maple and Black Hills.
Could I, uh, follow back up on, uh, I'm 100% with the idea of repairing this being ridiculous.
We had that since you were back there.
So we've, we've discussed these other older models. Uh, we're, we're looking at this one that's, uh, slightly used demo model. And then the new one's like an extra like, what, 10% over this unit here?
They're almost 300,000.
Um, like out of those options, like is there one that you think is like going to give the best value? Is it, is it this one?
It's the one we demoed. I mean, we need a mechanical. A regenerative air won't work.
The other one was regenerative air.
No, Pelican's mechanical.
Right.
I, I gave you a, I gave you on, on the comps, this one's a 19, that's 189,750 and it's got 13,579 hours on it. Um, the A9 Monsoon's 189,750, it's got 3,355 hours on it. The, the Timco, which that's what we, back in the day, we demoed that over on Second Street. That's regenerative air, 189,750 and it's got 3,250 hours on it. And then you've got the Schwartz, which they also sell the Schwartz at Ferris. That's 179,750 and it's got 28,203 miles on it.
In the interest of trying to kind of move this forward, it sounds like really the holdup here is, and I understand your point here that we don't know what we don't know. I, I completely understand that. But we have concerns about staffing maintenance routes. I think you give us some, some general idea on those. I think if we could get something on paper that kind of details out, is to the best you can tell, like we're going to have somebody dedicated this amount of hours. We're going to have this expected maintenance monthly or annually or quarterly. And, uh, this is the route we want to attempt to start things out. I think that would go a long way to alleviating, um, the concerns that we have here. Uh, other than that, I'm, I'm prepared to vote yes on this.
Uh, real quick, I'm going to check if Nick or Nicole have anything.
Well, I mean, I just, so when you look at these things, these things are designed to run 40 to 60 hours a week. If, if I ran 40 hours a week for a year, I'm looking at 200,000, 200,000 miles or hours on this thing. 2,000 hours is, and we're looking at one with 500 hours. This, this is a pretty new machine. I think it's something we need. I know we want to talk about routes and stuff, but some of that comes down to us having an ordinance in place to enforce cars being moved. Some of this also comes down to us that sit back here doing our due diligence and our research and, and learning about these vehicles, not expecting everything handed to us on a platter. So I think we, we need to approve it and get our streets cleaned up and you know what, this is, here, be mad at me.
Nicole, okay.
Robert?
Uh, comment, it's just basically, I'm here to vote, I, I kind of with Mr. Mullins and stuff, the city needs it. I would like to see it, but I'm here for what the citizens want. You know, listening to people out there, what, what they want. Uh, Councilmember Martinez put the thing on Facebook, if you would be willing to add five bucks a month to your, to your bill.
That's what they break in.
That's all, total negative, total negatives there.
They don't want to pay for it.
It. They worked against the street sweeper.
And as, as far as the, the 1% tax, when it was voted in, it was for paving the streets and sidewalks.
Uh, street maintenance or repair.
Street maintenance and repair in sidewalks.
Which is. Street maintenance.
Yeah.
But, I mean. Or a, or a lay down machine or a reclamer or, you know, anything you guys.
I, I just.
Are 15 streets still dirt? What is the fourth street, third street still dirt? I mean, we have several streets that are still dirt in the city.
But those are millions of dollars that need to be done, this is the, you know.
But you guys voted those down before, so we had them on a list and you guys voted against them.
I know they did 18th or 17th last year, we've got some to.
It's just more of a question maybe to my council members here, just because I'm, uh, a, a little bit confused on the 1% tax. I understand that's for the, uh, street maintenance. Does that also cover for the employees to work that, um, the maintenance for the, the street sweeper?
Some of the wages?
Yeah.
I believe some wages do come. Their administrative comes out.
Administrative.
I understood it did.
Anything involving street repair?
Yes, it, it does include administrative.
Cause it's a 1% infrastructure tax, correct? Isn't that how it was written?
1% street.
Yeah, it doesn't, yeah, it doesn't specify whether it's a capital improvement only, so it just says street sidewalks and other physical improvements.
Okay.
And going from four guys cleaning streets with a broom or shovel to one guy with a truck, that's an improvement in my book, that gives me three other guys to do other stuff.
No, I mean, they have a valid point about wanting to know a schedule, you know, and, and that's the thing is, it's, it's hard to put together a schedule now because now is when we, you know, we, we're not, we're not sure what it's going to take to, uh, do one block at a time. Uh, we know we're going to dedicate an employee to do it once or twice a week in the beginning. Um, we're hoping that that's, and be able to get every street eventually. Um, we have troubles, a lot of troublesome areas that really, really need it. We have places where water flows every day and it creates mud and sand and dirt. And, and, and a lot of those is, is, you know, becomes issues. That's why we have guys out there shoveling wet dirt out of the curbs because, uh, it could become a health department issue. Um, piling up water and things like that, but, um, you know, there's a lot of places that we need to be able to identify what the issues are in the road and, you know, and I, I get having a schedule. My first thought on it was we were going to do routes, we were going to start with immediate cleanups and then we were going to work towards developing routes and creating a schedule that we could get out to the citizens at least a month or two in advance. Be able to say, hey, look, we're going to start doing these so people know they'll move their cars over the other side of the street. And then we'd have to move them back to the other side of the street and then come back up the other side of the street. Do you have options? Are you in on one day? We, we, we've talked to other municipalities that do it and, and most of them don't even notify the citizens, they just drive around cars. Um, and that's not what we want to do, you know, but I mean, in, in my opinion, I thought, I always thought it was going to be more of a headache than it's worth, but honestly, what we're doing now is just. Can't get, we can't get ahead. Cool, and main brake cleanups, you know, sewer main cleanups, trash cleanups, but even the fair, I mean, it would be nice.
Do we have any sort of plan for, uh, vehicle operation training and maintenance training? I know some of that's going to be outsourced as far as like.
They come in and they do training for us.
So they'll, they'll, it's training on.
Yeah, the guy that was here will do all the training, all the pre-hoc, there's only six ZERs on it. So the, the maintenance on it is pretty minimal. Yeah.
I'm excited you got about that.
That when you back up, the tracks come up automatically, so that's nice too.
All right, I'm going to, I'm going to jump in here. So we, we had this discussion in March, we've had this discussion previously. Um, in March, we had pretty much the same, these exact same questions. A big part of it is, you know, what is the plan? Um, you know, so I, I know we hear that there is training provided, um, but it doesn't sound like there's a plan of who's going to receive that training, how does that, how do we re?
What, re the entire career?
That, I know. Um, I'm not asking the question now, it would have been really good to have that plan. Um, we could have definitely had options. We had options on the 180,000, 289,000, um, pieces of equipment. Um, so we could have had options on our maintenance and operations plan.
Yeah, well, we, we're, we're not the ones that are going to be most upset about it.
Yeah.
Move on, say no.
I think right now, if, if anyone wants to make a motion, um, I, I would say there's still questions that are unanswered. Um, and I, I think it would be best to move forward with this, uh, with the plan of how we are going to incorporate this, uh, piece of equipment into your daily operations.
I'd like to respond to something you just said real quick. You know, you, you ask him who's going to run it, who will be training? I'm just going to go ahead and say it, that's a, it's a bit of micromanaging from us, that's not our job duties. That, that's his job duty and her job duty to determine what the employees are doing, that's not us. I don't care who you're trying to do it.
And, and we're not, we're not looking at the level of the exact employee, you know, we're looking for what is the plan. We've seen other departments start new programs and they've been able to provide an estimate of how many man hours, how many FTEs, um, it was going to take to do this. They, they were able to calculate, um, salary and, and fringe benefits. Um, they were able to calculate how much operation ongoing maintenance was going to cost on these vehicles. So it's not a really difficult ask and, and all of it can be estimates, there can be, you know, options because we don't know all of the, all of the nuances until they actually get out there and, you know, start it and see, you know, where they need to make pivot. So I don't think it's, it's an unreasonable question, um, to ask, you know, for, for a plan on this, this large of a purchase.
Not only that, but, uh, it just, in the past, I mean, you're asking who's going to operate it? Well, I'm not asking for a name or he's not asking for a name, but who's going to be the operator? Whom, whomever is on there should be at least two people qualified anyway, minimum. But with, with past purchases, from what I've seen, sitting out there or sitting up here, purchases that have been made in the past, not cheap purchases and they're for one reason or another, it could just be coincidence or it could be accidental or whatever, misuse, don't know. But then when they need something repaired, their cost modified, then they, they come to us. So we should be able to ask, well, what is your plan and everything? To know this is going to be taken care of, we're getting a proper usage and everything else.
Just like everything else, we maintain it, I mean, that's.
Well, you know, well, at least, you know, we just, yeah, we, we thought, you know, it'd be nice to bring this presented to you guys. So it's, you know, ultimately, it's always up to you guys what we do moving forward on improving the city. So if this is something that you guys don't, you know, want to go forward with, we respect that. I mean, we're not going to go out and start acting dumb over you guys saying no over something because of something you guys want a little more clarification about. Um, but I mean, the best, I mean, the best we could do is bring it back another day, maybe next year or a year, two years later, we'll bring it back with some more, or just with the game plan.
More information, with the, a plan of.
Yeah, that's what I mean, so we could do that.
The longer we push things off, we start to risk, you know, this vehicle could sell next week.
You know, and then we're back on, on another vehicle and then we're, you know, now it's three months down and now it's a different one again.
I just, I really, you know, I thought we were the, like the council of, of progress and we're moving forward and not just continuing to nitpick the crap out of things. Let's just get, I, I make a motion that we approve the purchase of a street sweeper. Let's just do it.
I will second that motion. Um, I want to say like it's a difficult situation and it's not the first time this council has been in this situation and not just from your department, um, where I don't feel like I've had all the information and the council's had all the information that they've wanted. At the same time, I don't want to be discussing this in five more meetings. It's something that everyone up here more or less agrees that I want. And at the end of the day, it's going to be you and your team operating it. So if the program is unsuccessful, it's, if we're purchasing the equipment we recommend, it's so, it's kind of like on you once we approve it, you know what I mean? So like, they're coming to us with a proposal, if we approve it, then without like this kind of a game plan, then it's a little bit hard for us to judge what success is. But, um, that'll still be on, on your department's shoulders. But with that, yeah, I second the motion.
Um, I guess I'll ask Nick if you would amend. Can you specify, um, we, we had several options, we had four options up here, so can you specify?
The, uh, I motion that we approve the proposal to purchase the 2023 MT4H mechanical sweeper that was here demoed the 21st amendment.
Okay, and we have, on that piece of equipment, we have four separate purchase options.
I like the one that we own it in seven, is that the one you want, Rick?
I, that would be up to you guys, I mean, it, it's a consideration. I think it would be nice to own it.
As far as price, if you go there.
Well, the five puts us in.
You have an option of zero down, $50,000 down, $100,000 down or the fair market lease. And all of them are deferred payments for 365 days, so for an entire year.
So if we take the, we take what? How much did we put aside for the sidewalk that only three people have not joined in?
50.
So there's a little bit of that left, let's, let's just go with the 50 down?
Say we're at 20, we use 20.
It is, roughly. Sorry. I mean, I, I, I think conservatively, the 50 down would give us a something, a jumpstart. I think that's what I would go with for now.
Is that your amendment?
That's my amendment to it.
Okay, so Nick has a motion to purchase the 2023 Odra MT4H mechanical road sweeper. Um, this would be at $189,000 with the $50,000 payment, down payment. Um, and then the loan payments would be deferred for 365 days. And how many years was that?
I'd do the seven year myself.
Um, with a seven year term with annual payments of $25,849.65. Are you okay seconding that? We have a second from Mullins, call the vote, Rebecca?
Baram.
No.
Martinez.
Yes.
Mosby.
No.
Roberts.
No.
Mullins.
Yes.
McMurray.
Yes.
And Mayor Gurley.
No. That motion, um, just not passed, it was a three to four vote. Um, just one thing I'd like to comment, just kind of hearing, you know, maybe what the next steps are. Um, you know, I think there's clear questions that, um, were up here. Uh, so if, if those questions can be answered, um, at, at any time, I think we're ready to revisit this. Um, I, I really don't think it would take two years, um, to answer those questions, I really hope it doesn't.
Well, I, what I'd like to say is that what we were trying to buy is not going to be available, so we'll be looking for something new. So that'd be something we would bring you back to you, is something new rather than being able to. So that'd be something we would bring you back to you as something new rather than being able to get the deal that we're going to get. But, um, um, they were holding onto it up until tonight, so.
Appreciate that.
Don't thank you for what they did.
All right, we will move on to item number thirteen-two. Those are the Rocky Ford Planning Commission recommendations to the Rocky Ford City Council.
We approve or disapprove these as a whole or?
We will do these, um, one by one.
Okay.
Who we doing first?
Well, I have Nicholas and, uh, together on that recommendation.
I find Ashlyn Meyer.
Nick, I know you're mad at me right now. Can I have some?
I don't know. Maybe the best.
So I'm going to read this. Uh, this is from, uh, City clerk. Uh, the City of Rocky Ford Planning Commission held a public hearing on Monday, June second, twenty twenty-five. The City of Rocky Ford Planning Commission conducted a public hearing to accept public comments regarding applications submitted by Jeff Overmiller requesting the subdivision of property located at seven eleven South Thirteenth Street, Rocky Ford, Colorado, and an application submitted by Lex Nichols requesting the subdivision of property located at nine oh three South Seventh Street, Rocky Ford, Colorado. The City of Rocky Ford Planning Commission, after conduct, conducting a major impact hearing, voted to approve the requests made by Jeff Overmiller and Lex Nichols and to make a recommendation to the Rocky Ford City Council to consider and approve the recommendation. So with that, I open it up for any discussion or look for a motion.
I'd like to ask, uh, we'll start at the seven eleven South Thirteenth Street. What do they want to do? What do they do in there?
Yeah, so that one, um, it is a nine-ish thousand square foot lot. There are currently two separate homes on there. Um, and he's looking to subdivide them. Um, so each home has its own parcel. Um, we didn't have the exact square footage of what they would be, but they would come in around, um, fifty-one thirty-nine, so fifty-one hundred square feet for one lot, the front lot, and then thirty-nine hundred square feet for the back lot.
I would like to add that during that meeting, I wasn't present, but I was on Zoom. Um, my concerns were that we were going to drop below. Currently we have a seven thousand square foot minimum lot size for a conforming lot. Um, my concern was that we, if we did that, we were opening up the door for other things. But at the same time, after Dwayne and I had another discussion with moving towards looking at tiny homes and, um, ADUs and different things like that, by reducing the lot size would allow more building in the City of Rocky Ford of smaller homes and ADUs and stuff like that. So I was really opposed to it during the meeting, but after thinking about it from that perspective, it makes a lot of sense. Cause that would, if we did smaller lots and allowed them to build smaller dwellings on them, it would open up a lot of lots in town that currently sit as non-conforming lots.
A hundred percent agree on that call.
By, by being approved, being the smaller lots, they're still going to have the proper setbacks and everything or whatever? That's all going to still be in code for that or?
Yeah, it, it would be, those would kind of, you know, have their own variances to, to the existing code. So this would essentially also be, um, kind of waiving those. Cause if you, you know, if you have one that has a, um, you know, a ten or called a ten-foot setback from the fence, um, this would probably cut that down too. So when, when planning commission is approving that very, or that subdivision, um, it's doing that with all those kind of different factors in consideration.
He did say that they were taking the difference between two of the buildings on site and essentially splitting that equally between the two, so that they would each have the same amount of distance to their property line. But this sits over off of Thirteenth, right next to the nursing home.
Yeah, he was painting it just, I, I drove by all of these yesterday just to check them out. Even to my house. But, uh, just checking it out. Due diligence. But, uh, no, that's why I was just, I mean, you know, he's, he's, he's facing up in there. And that's what I was just wondering, what is this going on? I mean, I mean, you know, I've lived in cities where you got three or four gangways between buildings. I mean, you know, for fire hazards and everything, when you get that close, then, you know, that's my concerns, you know, but, uh.
I'd like to, um, if you're, if you have more that you would like.
On these two, oh, on seven eleven, no, more on seven eleven.
On the first one, you're, you're good.
If we're devoting on these separately, I'd like to make a motion.
These, these two will go together.
They'll go together, okay. Is there something on thirteen?
Well, the one on South Seventh Street, I mean, Seventh Street, it was hard enough for me to find.
So he dead, it dead ends. A pass will load and he is the very last house on the right-hand side. He's purchasing a piece of the lot to the south of him.
That open, I was wondering.
That's open there. He's just purchasing a small portion of it to put a building on it so that he can move his dad's stuff from Arizona in storage.
Yeah, cause I mean, Seventh Street, I didn't even know was there. It's, it, it's, I'm sorry. It's an alley and it's a dead end. I drove in, I had to back out. I mean, yeah, so. If we did, okay, that, that's it for me.
All right, with that, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the, uh, City Planning Commission's proposal for, uh, the discussed properties.
I'll second that. Can I do that since I'm on it?
Yes. All right, we have that, uh, motion from Mullins and the second from, uh, Roberts to accept the Planning Commission, uh, recommendations and allow a subdivision at seven eleven South Thirteenth Street, Rocky Ford, Colorado, and a subdivision at nine oh three South Seventh Street, Rocky Ford, Colorado. Call the vote.
Martinez.
Yes.
Mosby.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Mullins.
Yes.
McMurray.
Yes.
Barone.
Yes.
Mayor Gurley.
Yes. That, uh, those applications for subdivision have been approved. Our next item, um, with that, but a separate planning commission recommendation, um, we do have this one, uh, it is a special use permit and it was submitted by Ashley Meyer and Travis Meyer from four oh nine South Fourth Street in Rocky Ford, Colorado, and they are requesting a special use permit um, to allow a camper trailer on the property, um, with someone living in it while that person is doing renovation, yard cleanup and landscaping. Uh, a public hearing was held Monday, June second to hear testimony from the applicant and public. City of Rocky Ford Planning Commission, after conducting a major impact hearing, voted and approved the application and makes a recommendation to the City of Rocky Ford City Council requesting that the Rocky Ford City Council consider and approve the special use permit, um, with, with these conditions, that this permit authorizes, authorizes, uh, J.C. Evans to live in a camper trailer on property located at four oh nine South Fourth Street. This permit will be enforced so long as the terms and condition of this permit are fully complied with. This matter will be reviewed before the planning commission in four months. Applicant will provide photographs, updates and anticipated completion date of work to be performed. The special use authorized by this permit shall be in conformity with all applicable federal and state statutes and regulations as well as applicable local regulations, land use controls, including but not limited to applicable comprehensive or master plan subdivision regulations, zoning and building codes. Um, additionally, uh, in accordance with section sixteen three fifty of the Rocky Ford Municipal Code, this permit shall be binding upon and run with the land to which it applies. Um, there will be a review hearing held October sixth, twenty twenty-five at six P M. And if anything of historical or archaeological significance is found, the State Historic Preservation Office shall be contacted immediately. So I'd open this one up for any discussion or look for a motion.
Couple of questions. Uh, if he has a park there, where is he going to park it and what is he going to do with sewage?
It's where it's been for the last four months.
What's he doing for sewage? How's he going to dump it?
We don't have that information.
I have, I want to know what y'all think and then I'll let you know how I felt about this one.
Four months, I mean, right now we're actively trying to get rid of people living. I understand he's working on it. Uh, I understand you, we just passed, you have twelve months to finish it once he starts it with the ordinance that was gone through for the repairs.
That may or may not apply to this because it's, people actually live in the house. There's a family that lives in the house. They don't even own it. Um, it's owned by a landlord. These people moved in and were, the agreement was for them to fix the house. They have now asked another person to help them fix the house and he is living on their property in a fifth wheel. Um, he's been there for what? Four-ish months plus? Um, he got cited by Tony, came in and applied for an extension. Stacy gave him ninety days and now they came before the planning commission asking permission for this.
So my concerns, like you said, is the waste.
Did you drive by this?
I drove by, yeah, I drove along, you know, I'd say you went by his house.
Is it on property or on the street?
It's on the property in the backyard, but you can see it from the street.
Uh, does he have power? Is he going to be running generator day and night where neighbors are going to be listening to noises?
I think he's running power from the house. Um, so the people that live in the house also have four dogs and he has two, which means there are currently six dogs living on the property.
That's a different situation. My opinion is simple and, uh, doesn't require any, uh, any questions really. When I first heard this, I was, I'd be in support because I see four people coming in and fixing properties and going through the proper process to do something that would otherwise be illegal. And now I'm hearing that perhaps that wasn't the first move that was taken.
No, it was not.
So, um, yeah, I, I kind of lost faith in the proposal based on that.
So they, planning commission actually wanted to give them nine months. Um, and I was very adamant. I asked for three, um, Dwayne suggested four and I went with it. Um, I am familiar with this property. Um, I monitored this property when I worked at Total Concept back in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. Um, it was in horrible shape then. Um, it sat empty for probably until this gentleman purchased it, um, and then this family moved in there. Um, in my opinion, it has not been kept up in the time that they've lived there. Um, it's, the yard has been in disarray. There's crap everywhere. Um, to me, they haven't shown that they are trying to improve it in the time that they've already been there. They insist that now that this gentleman is there, that they're really going to buckle down hard and work on it. If we want to give them four months, I'm okay with that. But if after four months, I don't, if they're not showing improvement, I don't think that we should allow it to be done. And that's what I said at the planning commission meeting as well. I am also all for people coming in, fixing up houses and stuff like that. But I don't know that, I don't feel that these people have shown that that's what they're going to do. I'm willing to give them one more chance because that's the kind of person that I like to think I am. But after four months, if we don't see any improvement, I don't think that we should allow it. My other concern here is that if we allow these people to do it, we are going to have a lot of people coming to planning commission asking us to allow them to live in their camper on this property or that property for this reason or other reasons or whatnot. And if we get to the point where we're getting ten of those every couple of months when we have planning commission meetings, are we going to be inundated with that? And then are we going to have camp, people living in campers all over town?
Just becomes an enforcement issue.
Agree, it becomes a very big enforcement issue and we already have an enforcement issue that needs to be, get to a good point to where it's efficient and Tony's not trying to play catch-up with the last five years. I feel like if we're going to allow people to live in campers, we're going to put a lot more on Tony's plate. And right now he's trying to get his feet under him and get into a good place.
So I'm, I'm one that says if it's on the property, I don't care. I lived in an RV for two years. Uh, as long as it's not on the street, I think that we have to allow people to do what they need to do with their own private property or property they've rented that becomes theirs according to the lease. As long as the other ordinances are, and I, I don't even think this is an issue with that. I mean, what you say is valid and that's above my pay grade to, to be concerned myself with the other ordinances that may or may not be not in compliance or non-compliance. I think for this, let the guy live in the RV. I don't think it's hurting us.
I like to say, like I said, I, I drove by, I saw what I saw. I'm, I'm pro fix, fix it up, you know? May make it more valuable, help the property throughout the, the block, the neighborhood, the city. Uh, but if he's been there four months, he's already been doing this, he waited till he got cited. I'd say give him ninety days and that's it. Give him ninety days and if there's not an improvement and if he can show what he's doing with the waste and everything, everything's legit, let him fix it.
The recommendation is a hundred and twenty days, four months, revisit on October the sixth.
I think, you know.
Given through the summer.
Once the planning commission gives us something, I don't know, you guys have already discussed it. That's, I say we just move forward with it.
Is there any other comments?
I'll, I'll, yeah, I'll, I'll.
So I, I haven't seen the property. I don't really know all the details of it, but, but I also do remodeling and restoration work myself. And I know that in four months, you can do a lot. But it seems like four months would be pretty reasonable to reevaluate it and see, okay, is there been at least something? You know, or like he's saying, you know, what do you, what do you do with the sewage? Well, in, in four months, you're going to know if, if they've been doing something not proper with the sewage.
Especially when July hits, I mean, we don't know.
So he also stated that when there was, there used to be a garage on that property and when it was tore down, it appears that they just buried it in the backyard. So the backyard is super high, the foundation is failing, like he's got a lot of stuff to do. And he did state that he was going to work on the outside first at, while the weather was good and then work towards getting on the inside. So we should be able to see progress.
Yeah, I think four months.
In four months.
Good enough?
Yes.
Yeah, on this, I think a big part of it for me is, uh, us having a process in place. Um, you know, there are, uh, we have a process for people to look for variances, uh, to look for special uses. And, uh, you know, I, I appreciate, um, this applicant following that process because we know that on the other side that we are dealing with an issue of people illegally living in, uh, campers or other things, tents, you know, things like that. Um, so I, I, I do appreciate that and also, you know, the intent of this, uh, special use permit, the way that it, the way that it's allowed in there, it's for work. Uh, so, you know, the work of this one is that they're going to be cleaning up this property. Um, and when you look at some of the other properties on that block, um, there are some really, really rough properties that there's no, um, initiative or, you know, implied intention, um, that they're going to be doing anything. Uh, so I also appreciate this applicant, um, at least, you know, saying that they're doing this to, you know, address that, um, the obvious code violations that they also, you know, admitted, you know, are, are there. Um, I feel really good about this also knowing that, you know, it, it does have a four-month review. Uh, so this doesn't, you know, we are not, um, looking at, you know, authorizing someone to live in a camper permanently. Um, but, you know, this applicant is, you know, going to be staying in their camper, uh, to do work on the home. And, uh, this will be reviewed in, in four months. So, um, we would have an opportunity at that time to see, you know, the, what's been done and make another decision from there. And then also kind of the way that things work now that people have heard about this. Um, two things, one, we will definitely hear citizen impact or feedback that we didn't hear at the public hearing. Um, so we'll definitely hear that between the next four months. And then the other part of that is, um, maybe people didn't know about this process. So if someone does, uh, plan to stay in an RV for work purposes, um, maybe now they'll be familiar with this, uh, process that we have in place and be able to follow that. And then I think that also allows our code enforcement, um, to not have to kind of go rounds with people over whether or not they're allowed to do something. It makes it very kind of clear what the process is. So that's, that's my comment. Yeah, open it up for action.
Motion to approve special use permit twenty twenty-five, number one. Do we need to go any further?
No.
You're good.
I have a second.
The motion from Martinez.
I'm just going to.
Second.
Martinez.
You need your first.
Yes.
Mo Speen.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Mullins.
No.
McMurray.
Yes.
Barone.
Yes.
And Mayor Gurley.
Yes, uh, that special use permit, uh, number one of twenty twenty-five is approved with a six-one vote. We will move on to item number thirteen-three. Um, so this will be, uh, we'll be looking to vacate our regular city council meeting scheduled for Tuesday, June twenty-fourth. Um, as the council will be attending the Colorado Municipal League CML conference. But for discussion there or motion?
I need a motion that we make at the regular council meeting for Tuesday, June twenty-fourth.
I second, yeah.
We have the motion from Roberts, second from Mullins.
Mo Speen.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Mullins.
Yes.
McMurray.
Yes.
Barone.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
You don't even know where he is.
I want another.
Yes.
In two weeks, we all will be.
That is approved, um, just to note, we will be vacating.
He said no, he wants to go.
You can show up on your own.
We will be vacating our, um, second meeting of, of June. So we will not have a meeting on June twenty-fourth and we will meet again on July eighth, uh, next month. Our next item is resolution number nine.
We'll have to, we'll have to get him a suit.
They have these really cool, cool cuts.
I'll get, I'll get you a picture of me at the pool.
We'll bring you back all of the valuable information that we received.
Yes.
Okay.
Correct. I'll bring all the free pens.
Resolution number nine, series twenty twenty-five. Um, this is a resolution of the city council of the city of Rocky Ford, Colorado, recognizing um, IAFF number fifty-four ninety-seven as the employee organization for the employees of the city of Rocky Ford Fire Department. I wanna pass this one over to Stacy, just you'll kind of give us a, a comment on this.
Um, as I said in the, um, work session with this, if, if this supports the fire department chief and the staff, I'm fully behind this.
Open any discussion here or look for action?
Um, just a clarification, a point, um, if a motion's gonna be made on this, the third whereas pursuant to CRS twenty-nine dash five dash five oh five should read twenty-nine dash five dash two oh five. Uh, five oh five isn't an actual, and that, that's also reflected in, uh, the confidential documents we received from our attorneys in the conclusion. And, um, a question, and this is, this is my fault for not being at the, uh, work session, I, I'm, I'm pretty sure. We have, uh, city council, uh, designates, uh, the mayor and council member Robert Barone as city representatives for the meet and confer process. Now, decision-making authority is granted, uh, these representatives, um, to these representatives, uh, this designation. Is, is this meeting recorded so that the council general can, can, uh, hear the contents of it? Or how do we know beyond, I mean?
We, we could, this, so this is, and there is, it's not a meeting, it's the meeting. I guess, you know, it's general for any future meetings. Um, just so that way, um, that way, we don't have to have an, an open meeting, um, anytime that we meet with them. So we, we wanna have less than three council members.
Otherwise, it applies to open meetings.
So that's, you know, that's kind of that part. But I think it would also, it would be, um, myself and councilman Barone bringing back, um, notes or, you know, bringing back anything, to council if we needed to make any decisions, um, that, that would be, um, granted for, uh.
Was that, were the, uh, were you and, again, sort of why you would be included if that's, uh, one of the designations? But were these, were these two, uh, designees, designated at the work session? Is that how that happened?
No, um, so this, we need two, um, it would most likely be mayor. Um, so I did also recommend, um, councilman Barone and that's just based on his experience with unions.
Gotcha.
Uh, but as if anyone wants to make a change there, now's the time to do that.
Um, just on that point, before there's, before anybody asks on that, I would ask our city attorneys, um, our city attorney in this case is, is this the proper way to handle this with two designees? Um, is there any concerns there or are we good to move forward like this?
Uh, you'll have to unmute yourself. Can you hear me, Dan?
He's, he's responding.
We can't hear you.
Well, we can. Maybe a thumbs up or a thumbs down.
Mr. Mullins, I'd just like to say.
He says thumbs up.
He says yes.
Let's try this, how about now?
Can you all hear me? I can, I can hear you.
We can hear you now.
Yeah, we can. Go ahead.
Can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, so I, I think, um, I think your question was, was whether, um, it's appropriate to have two representatives that do, to do the meet and confer? And I would say, yeah, that is appropriate. And then also, I think the idea is that, um, those two representatives would then report back to city council on those discussions.
Okay, thank you for that, that's all.
That, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we're following procedures. That, that's always been my concern from the beginning.
Yeah, no, that, that would be part of the procedure. Basically, the way it works is that anybody who's represented by IAFF fifty-four ninety-seven, uh, the city has an obligation to recognize them and, and meet and confer with them on, uh, any matters of, you know, any policies, equipment, safety. And I think the idea would be is that there would be a meeting and then there'd be a report back to city council if there is gonna be any kind of changes to policies or, or changes to, to safety equipment. But in general, it probably would be a good idea just to have that conversation afterwards, uh, regardless of whether there's any, any changes or anything.
One small thing too, and I don't know if this matters, but you would be the person to ask on the first whereas, it does, it does, uh, it says pursuant Colorado Firefighter Safety Act, twenty-nine five two oh one, um, employees of fired, or, oh wait, I'm on the wrong one, sorry. Um, where am I looking at? Someplace that I'm hearing, it says that we recognize, the city desires to recognize the employee organization and designated city participants. So where, I, someplace I feel like I read that is saying we're, oh, here it is, on section one. Uh, city of Rocky Ford hereby recognizes local IAFF fifty-four ninety-seven as the employee organization for employees of the city of Rocky Ford Fire Department. My understanding is that all the employees have signed on with that. But my question would be, because this is optional for them, does this phrasing?
Yeah.
Become an issue? Is it, could it be an organization or is this proper phrasing?
You know what, I, I, yeah, I think that's a good point because of the fact that not all employees in the fire department are under this union. So I think that's actually a good point. Why don't, why don't we, if you, uh, pass this amendment, let's do it as amended to say, uh, recognizes local IAFF number fifty-four ninety-seven as an employee organization for, uh, employees of the city of Rocky Ford Fire Department. That's a good point.
Right, thank you.
They, they become a union basically because.
Any other questions or discussion?
I'd just like to make comments once, as you can see on the whereas number four.
Yeah.
Is that because there's fewer than twenty-four employees, there will be no collective bargaining involved?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, uh, I, I didn't, I didn't, I'm not, you know.
Yeah, I'm just, you know, just in case.
Yeah, it, it, just to be clear, like, uh, my understanding of law here is that we really don't have a choice but to pass this. So there will be voting in favor of it. I just wanted to make sure that we're voting something that's not gonna become an issue here.
I'd like to make a motion that we pass resolution number nine, series twenty twenty-five, with the two corrections of twenty-nine dash five dash two oh five and in section one at the bottom, changing as the employee organization to as an employee organization.
A second motion.
We have the motion from Roberts and the second from Mullins.
Followed with?
Roberts.
Yes.
Mullins.
Yes.
McMurray.
Yes.
Barone.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yeah.
Mo Speen.
Yes.
Mayor Gurley.
Yes. Resolution number nine, series twenty twenty-five, uh, passes and the city of Rocky Ford, uh, officially recognizes IAFF number fifty-four ninety-seven as the employee organization for the employees of the city of Rocky Ford Fire Department. Next is item thirteen-five is resolution number ten, series twenty twenty-five.
There isn't a thirteen point five, there's a thirteen point.
Six, six.
Oh, I, I, yeah, I, I.
I did that in my ears. We already approved the.
All right, number thirteen, uh, resolution number eleven. Series twenty twenty-five, a resolution opposing new annexations by the city of Colorado Springs that increases its water supply gap. So on this one, we did have that presentation from Jack Vogel of the lower Arkansas Valley Conservancy District, um, at that, at our last meeting. Um, or it was our work session, work session.
No, it wasn't.
That was our last meeting.
Um, so we do know about the annexation, um, that is happening up in, um, Colorado Springs and it's on the ballot for, uh, June eighteenth. So they will be voting, the people of Colorado Springs will be voting whether or not to annex, um, do a flagpole annexation, kind of over in the eastern, southeast area of Colorado Springs. And, uh, we've learned that this annexation, um, Colorado Springs already has a supply gap of thirty-four thousand hectare feet of water, to support the buildout of land already within its city limits. And this annexation would increase that gap, uh.
I moved.
Can't remember the exact, sorry.
I thought you were.
I can't, I was looking for the.
That's right, done with your senses.
Exact number of. But it would increase that supply gap. So this is, uh, providing our stance, um, in opposition of that annex as it is a move that would increase Colorado Springs water supply gap, um, and possibly create, um, risk for water supply in the lower Arkansas Valley. Look for action on this.
I move that we approve resolution eleven. I second.
Can we have that motion from Mullins and the second from Martinez? We call that vote?
Mullins.
Yes.
McMurray.
No.
Barone.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Mo Speen.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Mayor Gurley.
Yes, uh, so this resolution passed six-one. Um, the city of Rocky Ford officially opposes, um, any new annexations by the city of Colorado Springs that would increase their water supply gap.
Okay, now Robert has questions.
All right, now we'll move down, our next item, and this was moved from.
You're okay, it's still passing.
This was moved from our consent agenda down to new business. Um, so we'll be looking at the request to close Public Street by the Arkansas Valley Community Cancer Support Group, for the Survivor Weekend on Saturday, June twenty-eighth, from eight AM to five PM. And I would, uh, open it up for discussion here.
Uh, questions, two is what I had on it, first on first page towards bottom. They filled nothing out as far as, are they gonna be selling property or something?
It's a bit, I forgot, I was remembering that name. It's a vendor fair, it's a poker run, a vendor fair and a car show. Vendors will be selling stuff. The cancer support group themselves will not be selling stuff, it's a fundraiser. So they're using vendor booths to come in, raise some extra funds that way by getting vendor fees and then letting people sell their stuff in town. We are telling them that they have to get their food vendor, they have to come get their vendor thing from Rebecca and.
Is there any type of? I, I kinda figured that, I just want clarification cuz it was blank, it's like signing a blank.
I know, I'm sorry, I apologize. And Rebecca did call me and ask me all those questions.
Yeah, it's, yeah. That was in the audience or something.
It is, it's a giant fundraiser for cancer support, is what it is. And it's two days, they are gonna be set up on Friday and Saturday. The closure is only for Saturday for the car show so that the car show can be on railroad there. And then we're gonna open it back up by five o'clock so Len's can open and we have the survivor dinner and everything like that.
All righty, and then the next question actually pertains to both, for this one and the chamber on, on the Freedom Fest. Is the last sheet, uh, bonding. Uh, city owns the property and everything, these really have nothing to do with the city other than, um, the property, but neither one's providing bonding for insurance.
So we carry business insurance and I am going to double check with Russell if there's something additional that we need to do. In the past, I've, as far as I know, we've never had to carry anything. Most, all of our stuff has always been inside, um, which, as far as I know, it's, it works as a private venue.
Yeah, cuz, um, basically rent from the city, it's just the city owns the building.
The city owns it, but we manage it. So they were responsible for everything in it, so.
And it's just, that's my concern is they're both crossed out like there's no bonding.
So, and, and let me just jump in for any explanation that you might provide. As is, we are, if any action that we're taking on this were taken as is, the way that it's completed on here. So if this were approved, it would be approved without any expectation of them having insurance or being bonded or any of those items that are not checked. So there may be additional context, but as is, we're not approving it with that context.
So I need to verify that with Russell. Um, I haven't been told that we need anything additional, but I will double check on that. It's not something that, this is our second year of doing this outdoor vendor event. It went well last year and I'm, I'm trying.
Power to you, I'm just protecting the citizens.
Yeah, oh, absolutely, absolutely. So yes, I am gonna check into whether or not we need any additional insurance for it. Um, and if we do, I will obtain that through Russell.
If we table that one, we still have enough time to get it approved.
Nope, nope, we don't have a meeting, we don't have another meeting.
Can we not approve pending?
We don't have another meeting for this.
Can we approve pending verification?
Okay, I'm pending, I can get a letter from Russell that says I do.
As long as you have that before the event, if you don't have it before the event, then it's, but we, can we approve with the understanding that they have to provide money or proof of money?
Insurance.
I, I would say, um, if they are unable to provide that, um, then the Freedom Fest will not happen in Rocky Ford. So also just keep that in mind. We can do, we can do a lot of different things. But yeah, as, as is, this is what we're working with. We could look at council calling this special meeting, um, before July third.
If we call it, it doesn't.
If we call it, it doesn't.
I didn't have to pay, we don't have to pay for a suite closure payments.
But if we did a.
If we call it, it's a special meeting, it just don't wanna cost any money. Actually, I do, I understand where he's coming from. Which, everybody else has to have.
Cuz you would be calling it that.
Special meeting, then I guess.
I mean, if we don't get the insur, if we have to have insurance and we, I mean, if I have to have insurance, I'm gonna write the check and get the insurance. If we don't have to have insurance, I'll get a letter from Russell saying that I don't need any additional insurance, that my business insurance covers that.
I'd like to make a motion that we pass, uh, the Freedom Fest on Friday, as is.
Survivor Weekend?
Yeah, well, this is one.
The first one is Survivor Weekend.
Oh, Survivor Weekend, sorry.
And I'll have to have Kerry. And I'll have to have Kerry figure out whether. We'll figure out whether we need insurance and if it's needed, we will take care of it, if it's not needed, I'll get a letter that says we don't.
It just, everything that, that I see, everybody else at the price for it has to have insurance, because it is city property, but it's a non-city function.
So we, we do, we have that motion from Mullins to.
To approve.
Second from Councilman McMurray.
Okay.
Call the vote.
McMurray.
Yes.
Barone.
As is, no.
Martinez.
Yes.
Mo Spie.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Mullins.
Yes.
And Mayor Gurley.
Yes, that request to close Public Street by the Arkansas Valley Community Cancer Support Group on Saturday, July 28th, from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM has been approved with a six one vote. We'll move down to the second request to close Public Street from the Rocky Ford Chamber of Commerce for Freedom Fest on Friday, July 4th, from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And we did have one question answered on this, but look for any other discussion or action.
With lack of questions, I'll go ahead and ask that we approve Freedom Fest on Friday, July 4th.
I'll second. Can we have the motion from Mullins, second from Martinez, call the vote there?
Barone.
No.
Martinez.
Yes.
Mo Spie.
Yes.
Roberts.
Epstein.
Mullins.
Yes.
McMurray.
Yes.
Mayor Gurley.
Yes, so that request to close Public Street from the Rocky Ford Chamber of Commerce for Freedom Fest on Friday, July 4th, from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM is approved with a five one vote and one extension. Making sure I didn't, making sure I didn't have any extra items on there. Yeah, open it up for our second public comment, if anyone would like to come on up. Going twice. All right, next item that we have is an executive session. This executive session is to hold a conference with the city attorney to receive legal advice on specific legal questions pursuant to CRS 24-6-402 subsection 4B concerning the outcome of criminal proceedings concerning city property and staff. Just note, know what further action will be taken after the executive session. One second.
Thank you all for coming, I appreciate it.
I'd like to have a.
Faces up there. Have a good evening.
Try to stick it. You need a second on that, don't you, David?
Second? I don't know who's next. Going.
I'm third.
I was seconding that.
So on this one, look for a motion and then if you'll read that in full, so just make a motion and then read that.
I make a motion that we go into executive session, we'll hold an executive session to hold a conference with the city's attorney to receive legal advice on the specific legal questions pursuant to CRS 24-6-402 4B concerning the outcome of criminal proceedings concerning city property and staff.
A second.
Clicking out?
Yeah, and just to, just to note, those going into executive session will be myself, Mayor Dwayne Gurley, Councilman Mullins, Councilwoman Roberts, Councilwoman Mo Spie, Councilman McMurray, Councilman Barone, Councilman Martinez and city manager Stacy Malinsky and city attorney Dan Harvey. And we will go over into Stacy's office.
And I understand that you don't plan to take any action except to adjourn.
And no other action after executive session except to adjourn, and we have the motion and the second, Rebecca, call the vote.
Mo Spie.
Yes.
Roberts.
Yes.
Mullins.
Yes.
McMurray.
Yes.
Barone.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Mayor Gurley.
Yes.
No, no!
For Rocky Ford Council and people of San Francisco.